I think all the council is here.
So.
If we can start. Recording.
I'll start your live stream and give it just one moment should be set in a second. Looks like you're good for that.
Ken Burke. The Affordable Housing.
He is.
I know how my list in front of me.
Yes, he is on the board.
Any members in the audience, in the attendees, if you raise your hand, we can bring you in.
Colleen, I just grabbed Ken Burke. Chris Little.
So let me bring him in.
Chris Little.
Chair of the Housing Authority.
Yeah, he's not a member of.
This is.
Not, although you're not going to run into a quorum problem with that with that commission. If you'd like to bring Chris in for the conversation, you can do so without offending the Open Meetings Act.
Well, at this point, I think since it wasn't really advertised as the Housing Authority, maybe he can be an attendee. And then if there's something that comes up regarding the Housing Authority, we can pull them in for the.
We can do that and then we can.
Okay.
Certainly.
Okay. Colleen, you're going to take care of that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And you are recording and streaming, so you're set to go.
All right.
All right, well, thank you all for being here. Welcome to this meeting, work session of the South Kings Town Council. It's work session of the Planning Board and Affordable Housing Collaborative. We're here to discuss a big agenda tonight, but our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Susan, if you would please lead us in that, that would be great.
Absolutely. Everyone would join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And so item two on the agenda tonight is the discussion regarding the Horstley Witten report on multi-household development and inclusionary zoning. I anticipate we probably have PowerPoints to go along with all or most of these agenda items. Rob, I don't know, did you prepare those or who's in charge?
We're gonna, we're gonna be switching around a little bit, but Jamie Rabbit will lead us in this discussion.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Abel. Just as a kind of background, the Horstley Witten study was in essence commissioned well over 18 months ago. In that timeframe, you've had a little bit of changeover in staff at the director level. I came on board in September of this year and tried to worked with the planning board as well as Jeff Davis from Horstley Witten and you, Jeremy Lake and Donald Powers on continuing the, to move that forward. We actually have a meeting scheduled tomorrow to continue with our next steps. To date, there have been a number of public outreach meetings over the past two years. There have been discussions about what types of housing would be appropriate for the community and a discussion of the missing middle with regards to how and being the missing middle somewhere between single-family housing and large-scale apartment slash condo project. So those are small homes, cottages, duplexes, triplexes, stacked flats, up sixplexes, and then up to, we'll say, in a modern condo or apartment complex. Working with the Planning Board, they have a draft revision to their regulations associated with cottage zoning. They are working on the final aspects of that regulation as it applies to specific zones in town, initially thought to be the future sewer service district. And they're fine tuning the limits and boundaries of the district for where cottage zoning could apply. We have a meeting and workshop next week, hopefully to perhaps finalize the conversation on where that line should be. And then that would move forward to Town Council for possible action on. In that discussion over the last four months with the commission, they've developed design guidelines associated with the cottage regulations and not just written words. The words sometimes don't paint the picture properly. So the commission worked hard with staff and the consultant to, in essence, ensure that what the word said would result in the vision for what a cottage community looked like, both from a density standpoint and a architectural design standpoint. So again, I believe, Rob, that was distributed to the council as well as the affordable housing. I know Brian Wagner from our department has forwarded that to the housing folks. So again, the after the cottage phase, the next step would be to look closer at how triplexes, fourplexes, sixplexes and larger multifamily housing projects work within South Kingstown. Which areas are they appropriate for? Is it just within the future service district or are there opportunities slightly outside those districts to have other types of more dense housing units, which typically lead to more affordable prices associated with those, either being rent or market rate homeownership? That's just a little bit of background available for questions. I know a number of people have reached out to both the Planning Board and perhaps council regarding the timeframe associated with the project. But it is on the top of our pile within our department and we are working hard to move this project forward and resulting changes to our zoning regulations.
Mr. President, looking at the the agenda, the agenda is really built around work products that have been underway in the planning department with the Planning Board and with the Affordable Housing Collaborative. The next item, the comp plan, is also a work product that I think is more report out as the Horstley Witten report was. And then at that point, I think it makes sense for us to sort of step back from the simple, where are we in the major projects, report out phase of the meeting and have a discussion about housing policy more globally and then start coming to the cottage zoning and accessory dwelling unit elements as part of the sort of global conversation. So what I'd suggest is that we stick with Jamie for a report out on the comp plan. And then we come back and we'll do a sort of global discussion of housing and where we can, where we can maybe make some changes in what we're doing here in South Kingstown.
Okay, that sounds good. First, Councilman Burgner, your hand raised.
Yeah, thank, thank you. I just, I'm excited because I'm looking forward to a dialogue. But before we jump to the agenda, do we want to introduce ourselves? Because we're a new council and not everybody knows everybody and where they're associated with. And then also, if we could just have a, some guidelines on the format, like, do we want to hold questions to the end? Or do we just want to pepper in? So how does that work?
Yeah, I think with this many folks in the room, we'll, we'll sort of hold questions until people are done sort of presenting topics. And sure, if people want to introduce themselves, I was thinking, one thing that would be very helpful is if everybody could sort of put their identification, their commission or board association after their name. The way to do that is to, if you're looking at the participants list on the side of your screen, you can click on participants, that'll jump up over there on the right. And if you hover over your name, you can click on more and rename yourself. And keep your name, of course, but just put, you know, whether you're Affordable Housing Collaborative or Planning Board next to it, so people know who are watching, that would be very helpful. If we want to quickly go around, I'm Abel Collins, I'm council president. I'll ask other council members to go after that and then Planning Board, Affordable Housing. Rory McIntyre, Town Council Vice President.
Deb Burgner, Town Council.
Deborah Kelso, Town Council.
And Jess Rose, Town Council.
Steve Demasi, Planning Board Chair.
Maria Mack, Planning Board Vice Chair.
Joe Murphy, Planning Board and also the representative to the Affordable Housing.
Ete Stefano, Planning Board.
Who's an Axelrod Planning Board.
Paul Jordan, Planning Board.
Josh Thaly, I'm the Chair of the Affordable Housing Collaborative.
Christian Blaney, I'm also on the Affordable Housing Collaborative.
Jennifer Kruger, Affordable Housing Collaborative.
Kenny Burke, Affordable Housing Collaborative. All right, and thank you. You can have the staff introduce themselves as well, I suppose.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director. And I have two other staff members in the department with us tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Jay Parker, Principal Planner.
Ryan Wagner, Senior Planner.
Jamie.
Jamie Gorman, Building Official.
And thank you all for taking time out of your schedules tonight and for your service to the community in all your roles. And sorry to take all that away from you. Jamie, if you want to continue sort of telling us about where things now stand with the comprehensive community.
So with regards to the update to the Comprehensive Community Plan, the Planning Board approved it in its primary format in December and that there were some required edits to that, both from a format standpoint and some grammar, as well as updating a few of the data points within the maps. So we are undertaking those right now as the Town Council members are aware. I have a timeframe of the, within the next 20 days, because it was 21 yesterday, 20 today. So our intent is to deliver that final product with the staple in it within the next three weeks to the Town Council, which then takes their process for any potential revisions. And then ultimately, we would hope, adoption of the Comprehensive Community Plan.
So it might be helpful, Jamie, to sort of highlight some of the changes. If there's anything that jumps out as a, as a major issue or one that the Planning Board thought was particularly important in this revision.
I think primarily, one of the focus points between the prior plan and this plan was better articulating how land use development occurs and the regulatory mechanisms to ensure that land development occurs in a manner that is deemed appropriate by the, by the residents of South Kingstown with regards to design and density. There's a lot of language in the new plan with regards to developing standards and performance guidelines with regards to design. There's also a increased discussion on resiliency and incorporating climate changes, sea level rise, and how development impacts that, as well as resiliency associated with public infrastructure, be it sewer water or roads and the effects of those on the community as you deal with climate change. There's a strong component on affordable housing within there and the need for and discussions about moving that, that forward from both a policy side and a regulatory side. Again, the, the community plan is a map, a guideline. It's supposed to take you in a perfect world from point A to point B. And it gives you the, the roads and directions to take, realizing that there are also multiple roads to get to a final destination. It is a 300-plus page document with over 30 pages of implementation and probably 60 pages of goals and objectives. So it, it is a document that is, needs to be living and breathing, needs to be digested by everyone in order to bring that to fruition. I hope in the next, probably six to 12 months, that as the plans adopted and the Planning Board works on their work program, that we can highlight priorities. And I think some of those priorities will come out of discussions with other boards and commissions, such as the Council and Affordable Housing and Conservation Commission and others. It's not a stagnant document and it, it needs to be looked at, reviewed and, and followed through on with priorities based on what the community finds are, you know, the top 10 list. But again, our goal is to deliver that document within the next three weeks.
And then just for adification, it's delivered to us. We have a hold public hearing on it, correct? We approve it and then it gets submitted to statewide planning and they have to approve it as well?
Yes. So again, there, there, in essence, Mr. Collins, President Collins, you are correct. There are two more steps and that would be council action, then state action before it becomes officially adopted.
Jamie, and please, I try to keep it pretty informal here, so you can call me Abel or whatever.
Okay. The, the, the draft plan is available. It's up on our webpage, if anyone's interested in it. It's a light read, I said at 300-plus pages. Lot of pictures, so, lot of pictures, lot of maps. So if you're really, really looking for something to do one day, feel free to, to have a light read.
Jamie, do you think you could also, this is Maria Mack, could you reference for anyone in the audience who has an interest, the other documents that we have referred to, the accessory dwelling units, the draft cottage zoning, the inclusionary zoning and so on?
Yeah, with regards to the cottage regulations, those are, in essence, an outcome or one of the products that was recommended in the Horstley Witten discussions, as well as the Affordable Housing Collaborative, working with the Planning Board of one of the ways to introduce denser housing development in a certain design standpoint. And really what cottage regulations are, is their outflow of design from California and also from Europe, where you group a number of houses in the 800 to 1200 square foot size around a common courtyard or green. And they all face each other with torches and other articulations from an architectural standpoint to generate small communities as infill development targeted around Peace Dale and other villages in town, but primarily would only fall within the future service district. Not in the, you know, the R40 zones or in western portions of the town. It would be centralized around Peace Dale and Wakefield. Just the other thing, Maria Mack's point, incentive housing, in essence, is a regulatory requirement contained within our regulations. When a development of six or more units are proposed, there is a requirement that the developer provide 20% of those housing units as what's called LMI, low moderate income housing, where those units are deed restricted and available, in essence, at a reduced market rate price for working class families, your, your school teachers, firefighters, nurses and other workers within the community. They are not associated with either Section 8 or commonly referred to as HUD housing. They are market rate units offered to the community at a reduced price. And it is responsibility to the developer to build those units.
Great, so we are getting into sort of the fourth and fifth. Are there presentations for any of these, Rob? I know that we were given some sort of.
What I would suggest, part of our objective tonight is to sort of follow. And this is really, in many ways, a continuation of a conversation that the council and the planning board started probably 24 months ago now, talking about the priorities for affordable housing. And the next two items on the agenda really are outgrowths of the conversation that was held two years ago. The Planning Board, the Planning Department and the Housing, the Affordable Housing Collaborative have been working on strategies to implement ideas that came up during the course of that conversation. I think it's helpful, though, for us to go back and recognize that we are still in a place where we have to decide what the goals and objectives are with regard to both land use and housing policy here in, in South Kingstown. The two work products, the two strategies that will be outlined when we talk about cottage zoning and when we talk about accessory dwelling units. And when we talk about, actually, a third piece of that conversation is administration strategies around the Affordable Housing Trust, which, which the town established back in the 90s. So as we get into those discussions, what we're doing is we're talking about implementing objectives that were set two years ago. We're getting very close to being able to actually put those, those strategies into place. But I think it's helpful for us to step back and look at where we are with regard to land use and look at where we are with regard to housing and ask the question, are there other goals? Are there other objectives that we, as a community, need to be setting now? We are two months or two years down the road from where we were. And while the, the three things that we're going to talk about further in the agenda are outgrowths of a previous conversation, it makes sense to reset, I think, and have a conversation that's a little broader than that as well.
So. If I may, I do have, if, if the question comes up, I do have the Affordable Housing Cottage regs. Four-page handout that I, that Rob sent to council members and Affordable Housing. I have that available and could do a share screen. I also have a three-slide PowerPoint on where the community has been since 2005 with regards to affordable housing. The question may arise, like, how many units do we have? How have we done over the years? I do have that available, that comes up as a discussion item. Again, I have a few things that I can do a share screen if they come up.
All right.
I'd like to share my screen and just sort of give you guys a very broad, it's somewhat scattergun approach, but a very broad perspective on where we are in terms of land use and housing policy, if, if you don't mind, Mr. President.
If you'd like to do that, now we can. And then, you know, one of the things I think we discussed on Monday was, you know, really asking our boards and commissions, you know, for input from them to help us come up with goals and objectives around land use. So yeah, so after you present, Rob, maybe we can hear from the Affordable Housing Collaborative. Somebody, I don't know, one or multiple members can talk about their experience over the past couple of years, working with Horstley Witten, something like that. Take it away for now, Rob.
All right, so the first thing I do want to point out is that this really is a major input. This, this discussion is a major input into an important part of our planning and budgeting exercise here in South Kingstown. In South Kingstown, our budget follows the objectives and the goals that the council identifies in 14, at this point, priority focus areas. Two of the priority focus areas identified by the council are land use and housing. So the difference between an objective and a goal is that a goal is a long-term thing. A goal is something that you're trying to hit five or 10 years or 15 years down the line. An objective is something you want to do within, it's an action, a clear action that you want to do in the next year or two. So the bounding of this discussion in some ways is really all about making sure that we identify those long-term, 10, 15, what do we want to see in terms of land use 20 years out for open space, for housing, for commercial uses, all of that sort of thing? And what do we want to see 10, 15, 20 years out with regard to housing? And when we are talking about affordable housing, what do we want to see in terms of affordable housing in, in a very general sense? From previous conversations with the Planning Board and the council and the Affordable Housing Collaborative, these are the elements that keep popping up. Housing should be safe. We do get into a security thing. We want to make sure that vulnerable populations are, are safe in storms and in heat waves and this sort of thing. Housing should be affordable, it should be accessible. Everybody should have a way to get housing, the housing that they need. Should be located in neighborhoods and villages that are vibrant and inspiring. This is one of the, the things that keeps coming up in the conversation about affordable housing and housing in South Kingstown. It should be clean, quiet and enjoyable. A lot of focus on, and this is an old slide, but this issue does not go away and in fact, isn't new in 2019 when this article was published. This is a perennial issue. There is a longstanding belief that the primary problem in housing is that there's an insufficient supply of affordable housing. It has been argued quite often that the issue is actually income. If you had people earning a living wage, then affordability would go away because you're tackling the problem from the income side as opposed to the price of housing side. But there is a longstanding and continuing focus on the production of housing. For us in South Kingstown, that poses a particularly difficult problem because one of the things that we cherish in South Kingstown, that the community has strived to maintain, is that dark spot on the Atlantic Ocean that shows up here. The entire eastern seaboard is lit up like a Christmas tree, except for Charles Town and Matunik. Now, that's because our policies in South Kingstown have favored open space. We've done a lot to ensure that we preserve open space in South Kingstown. And this is a map showing where we've got open space. These are the various levels of low-density land use in South Kingstown. The darkest green are deed-restricted open space and the others are various levels of zoning restrictions on, on development. But we're a very green spot and we're a very, very dark spot. In fact, we're the only dark spot on the eastern seaboard because we have maintained open space. Now, there's a thought that that drives the cost of housing. Folks tend to think that because we have lots of open space, land is scarce and because land is scarce, housing is expensive. There may be some truth to that, but there's also some, some contra evidence. It's quite often the case that if you take an acre of land and you say you can now do, split it and make two half-acre parcels, instead of getting a hundred-acre parcel that is divided into, with each parcel being $15,000 worth of value. Now, you quite often get two parcels that are two, that are $100,000. You've actually not reduced the cost of land because it's the buildability. It's the usability of the land, not necessarily the surplus in a lot that drives the price. It's also something that we have to be careful about when we think about affordability to get locked into statutory definitions. This map here shows housing by three different measures of affordability. The red blocks are places in South Kingstown that are deed-restricted affordable housing. Those are units that the state of Rhode Island has identified as housing that qualifies under the state law to be considered affordable housing. The blue dots are all of the places that sold in a year that were valued less than the state value for affordable units. So in the case, if we come to the center of the map, is my cursor showing up?
Yes, Rob.
So this unit was a single-family residential unit that was deed-restricted. It sold for under $378,000. It was a low and moderate income unit, according to state law. The blue dot, three houses away, was a unit that also sold for less than $378,000. But because it was not deed-restricted, it is not a low-income unit. Now, this policy actually causes a lot of distortions in the marketplace. It so happens that the family that has this unit, the red unit that is deed-restricted, can never really see the sort of profit that comes from rehabbing the house or fixing the house or expanding the house or improving the house. Whereas the guy three doors down can buy the house, can fix the house and has no restriction, can sell the house and improve the lot for his family, can improve his, his economic circumstance over time. So we're, we're in a funny regime when we talk about affordable housing. And one of the things that I'd like folks to be thinking about as we go forward is what is it that we can do to make better use of those units that are economically, according to the state's criteria, economically affordable, though they are not deed restricted? Pulling out, we're seeing another phenomena. If you'll see, if you look down in the corner here where my cursor is now, this is a number of affordable units that were deed restricted and built as part of a larger subdivision. But we know anecdotally that those units were actually sold, sold to retired persons who have no income because they're retired or low income because they're retired. We're not necessarily adding units that are workforce enabling. They're not necessarily units that are beneficial to the entire, the entire spectrum of low and moderate income people. We are building units in this case, down in this subdivision, that are beneficial to retirees who want to move to the beach community. We've also had anecdotal evidence about college students being purchased units for, by parents who, you know, moved the college, the college kids into the unit while they're attending the University of Rhode Island. So our policies are easily distorted and are quite distorted. This is the number of affordable units under state law in, in South Kingstown. This is a list of all of the affordable units, all of the affordable units in South Kingstown. I will say that it's, it's notable that under the state definition, all of the units can be fit on a single page. And on a screen like this, it's not even too small, the print's not even too small to read. We do not have a whole lot of affordable housing, housing units in South Kingstown according to the state's definition. But the state's definition is problematic in another, excuse me, in another way. And that is the way we get to affordable units under the state regime is you allow developers to build market rate units and give them credit for more density for building some affordable units. However, because you're building a larger number of market rate units for every non-market, every affordable unit, you're always chasing that market, that ever increasing market number. In order to achieve the state's affordability 10% criteria, we would have to build 10,391 units under the state's program. That's a lot of units to add to South Kingstown. That's how we get there if we follow the state's strategy. So again, for us, the real problem is we've got a character in this community that we want to preserve. The open space is really unique. We really have been able to achieve something that nobody else on the eastern seaboard has been able to achieve. And if we are stuck with our current regime, if we're stuck with our current regulations, if we're stuck with our current program profile, there's really nothing you can do but trade open space for housing units. If you're going to move, if you're going to move from open space more to housing units more, this is an unavoidable trade-off. The only way to avoid that trade-off is to change the rules. And if we can change the rules so that we've got greater density in places where we think it's appropriate, then we can get more units, but at the same time preserve the open space because we're not allowing the development to happen in the open space areas. We really need to figure out how to do this. Density only where it belongs, density only where we want it to happen because it's beneficial to the community as a whole. Real quickly, I think it's very important for us to start defining what we mean by affordable housing. We say it all the time and it means different things to different people. There are a number of different definitions that are used to define affordable housing. There is purchase affordability, is the purchase price too high? There's repayment or mortgage affordability and there's income affordability. So we need to, we need to worry about those aspects of it. Yep, I'm going to jump. This is just a notation sort of supporting my previous assertions. Mike DeLuca, who's been following the state program for many years, has also asserted that. Just very quickly, this is our housing stock. And if you look at where our residences are, the open space map is manifest in this set of statistics. We really only have about 12% of our land area that is less than one acre residential zone. It's, it's not a whole lot. The reason the map looks the way it looks, the reason that the satellite image looks the way it looks is because we have very carefully restrained the residential density to the point where about 12% of our total map is less than one acre zoning. I'm going to jump by this slide, although I'll make it available to everybody. It's a little bit too complicated for me to do quickly. Preservation of existing affordable homes is something that we never talk about, yet it's a really, really, really potentially impactful intervention. Again, those blue dots, those are all houses that are selling for less than what the state says is an affordable unit or the cost should be for an affordable unit. And yet we're not, we're not doing anything to help keep senior citizens in those units. We're not helping low and moderate income families fix those units up. We're not helping folks buy those units so that they can be fixed up. There's a lot to be done with the existing affordable units. And the suggestions that the Affordable Housing Collaborative is going to bring tonight speak to some of those. So new construction is an important part of the solution, but in South Kingstown, it's probably not, is probably not as big a part of the solution as it has been elsewhere on the eastern seaboard where we see the construction has filled up the, the, the entire map. We also have slow growth and so we, we really, unless we're going to, unless we're going to change it, we're not going to, we're not going to see building new housing as the biggest part of our solution. Just a very, really quick slide here. This is actually a local group that is helping do some of that existing housing stock improvement. And this is their statement of why and how they got into the business. They're recognizing that they're just, part of affordability is maintaining the property that you've got. And for folks with fixed incomes and folks whose mortgages and whose taxes have gone up, affordability over time becomes a real challenge. We do need to focus on this a little bit more. And I'm going to finish with this slide and just note that there are really, when we think about affordable housing, when we think about the cost of housing, there are really four factors of production. There's the cost of land, which is really the main thing that almost everybody who talks about housing policy focuses on. But there's also the cost of labor and profit. And there's also the cost of materials and, and the regulations around materials. These are all areas where we have the opportunity to make adjustments in policy. It's not all about land. It's not all about increasing zoning density. It's not all about reducing zoning restrictions. There are real leverage points with regard to the labor market and there are real leverage points with regard to materials and the quality of materials. We're seeing that where tradespeople are coming in and can buy old homes, they're fixing them up and they, they actually are finding affordable housing in South Kingstown. We're finding that where you can help people stay in a unit because you've got, like the, the program that was on the last screen, you've got folks who are willing to step in and help fix a roof, you can keep people in those units. Those policies can be very impactful. And I'm going to leave it at that and let folks have their screen back. Am I off? Nope.
Not yet.
Right, thank you. Good little synopsis there of where things.
A little scattered, but I, I still, it's a, it's a complicated set of issues. I hope that's sort of a potpourri that's helpful.
All right, very good. If I could, as I mentioned before, Rob started speaking, maybe just hear from Affordable Housing Collaborative on, you know, their experience recently with the Horsley Witten report and, and other issues as well.
Maria had her hand up before. I don't know if you saw that, Abel.
Okay, Maria, did you have a quick question?
Just, just a quick comment, but I can wait until after the Affordable Housing Collaborative has their turn.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I guess as the chair, I may say a word, but I'd welcome anyone else in the Affordable Housing Collaborative to add. So we use some, some funds that we had to, to, to put towards this Horsley Witten study, which we felt they did a number of really helpful things in this conversation. So, you know, one of the pieces that, that I think came out of it that, that was valuable and will be valuable going forward is looking at that missing middle piece and looking at what does that look like in South Kingstown already? What does that look like in terms of, you know, what types of housing we have and how does that meet the needs of our diverse community? So that was one piece that, that, that was important. Another piece was specifically around some, you know, regulatory pieces that, that they could identify that might be kind of low hanging fruit. And that's, you know, you'll see that in the discussion that you all have. I think those were two of the kind of key pieces that, that I saw in the work. You know, and it's, it's both driving, it's that larger question of housing affordability, not just capital A affordable housing, but housing affordability in our town and balancing the different elements that, that Rob spoke about. So, and I'd invite anyone else from the collaborative to, to add to that.
I'd love to say a couple of comments if that's okay. Rob, can I just ask a quick question? When you were talking about affordable housing, that was lowercase a, like homes, and you quoted 378,000 as your affordable level?
Jamie, have you got the, the figure for the current year? I'm not seeing.
Is that the 80% AMI level?
The number that I, so yes, I did say 378 and that was my recollection. Nonetheless, the blue dots and the red dots are the same income level or the same price for housing. So.
People making the same income would be able to afford.
No, 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 no. So it's the state has identified a price point for affordable units. It's what the 80% of income is, that's correct. But the blue dots and the red dots are both below that figure, whatever that figure is. If it's not 378, if I've got that wrong in my recollection, then it is whatever, whatever that number was.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure I had, I had a sense of that before I jumped in. Only because, you know, I want to take kind of the more 10,000 foot view on this. I think this is also an important opportunity for us to do that and just talk about where we are with trying to produce affordable housing. You know, and I just think of all the people that I've talked to, that there's no way they can afford $378,000 for a affordable house. It just isn't happening. So, you know, there's a, a good third of our households who would income, income guidelines wise qualify for affordable housing, one third of our population. And, you know, we have 5.6% of our, our housing is affordable. So I think we're in a pretty difficult spot at this point. You know, when we're talking about creating these objectives to reach our goal, we've been trying to reach our goal for over a decade, right? So that means we need to change the objectives or we need to change the goal. I, I'm hearing from the community, they want us to change the objectives and get some work done. So that's number one, which means as Rod said, we need to start thinking about having some different structures, some different levers to make sure that more people can afford to stay here in South Kingstown. I also just wanted to point out that, you know, if we're looking at that we have 500 something affordable units in town, it's not really going to take building 10,000 units to get our percentage up. I think, I think that that's confusing to the public. And, you know, it would take without anything else, five or 600 more affordable units to get us closer. But the community seems kind of resistant to building new, just affordable units. And that's something we're going to have to work through. You know, a lot of the other neighboring communities, Charlestown, just built a whole bunch of brand new affordable housing. It's beautiful. It looks like condos, people are moving into it left and right. I think South Kingstown, because we have such an old housing stock of affordable housing, has a really bad taste in its mouth about what affordable housing is. And we all have a, a role to play to help people understand that new affordable housing or preserved affordable housing can be wonderful and it's a beautiful place to live and it's not a stain on your community. Because I do hear things like that out in the community and I think it's because we've had some poor design in town over time. So I wanted to, you know, put those things out there. And, you know, just kind of say, you know, we, we also are fitting all of those affordable housing numbers on one page because we're doing a lot of big housing complexes, the senior complexes, you know, you only saw like three or four senior complexes in that list, but they're 56% of the affordable housing stock. So some of that is that we build our affordable housing in these giant plats of land and they're kind of separate from the rest of the community. And I personally think that that's an area where we need to change the way we do business around affordable housing in South Kingstown. It shouldn't be giant plops of affordable housing that are not integrated into the rest of the community. People who live in it don't like that and people in the rest of the community don't connect. You know, we're, we're, we're preventing people from interacting with each other. So, you know, I'm, I, I don't want to take up too much time because there's a lot of us and I think we have a lot of really great ideas to share. But I think at this point, I feel like the community is really saying to us, get to work, you know, find some good solutions, think outside the box. It's time to do this. There's way too many people in this community who are getting displaced at this point. So we might, we might have to change the way we do things to get this done. But I feel good about this group of people. I think that we can do a lot of things that will serve the community.
Mr. President, if I may, I just want to note, Jen's exactly right. 10,000 units is only necessary if you pursue the state's density bonus approach. That's not to say that that's the only way to do it. And in fact, my, my whole point is that's not the right way to do it. It can't work.
Abel, if I may, just quickly answer one of the questions with Jen had affordability and market rate. The number hovers just around 300,000 and that's continued upon taxes and interest rates. So you could be at the low end of 290 or go up to 310 depending on some market conditions.
Yeah, so I should have said 278, I think.
Yeah, we looked on Zillow to Brian, Jay and I were on Zoom call to preparation of this and we looked quickly at Zillow. And right now, if you look at what's available, I think 301 was kind of the entry level for a two or three bedroom home in town with one to one and a half bathrooms.
Great. One other piece of this discussion that I'd like to, I mean, I, I hear folks say like Charlestown just built, you know, this much affordable housing. Was it actually the town that built it or was it a developer that built affordable housing in Charlestown? We need to, you know, we're not a command economy like where the state just builds a lot of affordable housing, typically in, in small towns at least. So mostly we're talking about policies that will encourage developers to come in with affordable housing developments in town or hopefully mixed in, mixed income developments. Are there towns locally that are finding funds available to do, you know, affordable housing developments themselves?
Who are you looking to have answer that question, Abel?
Anyone who knows the answer.
Okay, well, I know, I mean, for example, Shanack Falls and Richmond Ridge that just happened in the Charlestown area. So that was actually, you know, that development was, was two developments over a town line. As I understand from Jeff Marshon, it was like years of negotiating around something with water rights before they could get the land part all squared away. So you're absolutely right. These kind of projects require a lot of collaboration between municipalities, between Women's Development Corporation, the nonprofit who was helping build this. You know, the Charlestown had a $1 million housing bond, so they were able to help with some startup costs. So they were able to help with some startup costs. And obviously that makes a difference too. Same as, you know, funding our Affordable Housing Trust Fund could potentially be seed money for projects. And, and I think you're absolutely right to point out, like, a lot of this needs to be either nonprofit municipal collaboration or public-private collaboration. You know, if we start trying to do some more innovative things with mixed use or mixed income, then we're going to have to have our funding come from different places, which I think is a really great idea. I mean, we could be on the forefront of this instead of on our heels. But I, my point was that it is being done literally in our neighborhood. So we shouldn't get too discouraged by the numbers. There's stuff that we can do. It's just that, you know, our priorities were different for a little while. Our priorities were more towards updating senior housing, which made sense with demographic changes. But then we kind of slowed down and didn't update all family housing. So I mean, I think that's an area where we have a gap right now and we could work on that. I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Can I tack on to Jen's, Jen's statement, which is great, also keeping it to the 10,000 foot level, which I think is important. And first of all, thank you guys for the opportunity for taking the time to chat. Because frankly, I think affordable housing is unbelievably important. And it doesn't always necessarily get recognized. I really think that it's, it's kind of the base for a lot of the issues that we're experiencing in the town right now. The way that we're going, you know, the direction that we're headed is sort of putting us in this cyclical area. You know, people aren't able to stay here and live here. I was born and raised here, went to high school here, and the vast majority of my friends could not afford to live here, you know? So seeing them move away, not seeing young families come in and buy houses here, seeing more out of state people buying second homes or people who are wealthy buying homes has resulted in dropped enrollment at the schools. Not a lot of new building is also limiting our tax basis. Clearly, we don't have, we're not making it up in commercial tax basis either, which is putting a drag on our, our tax dollars in general. And it's not spreading it out. Taxes are going to go up no matter what. You can see it in the data from the CCP. And thank you, Jamie Rabbit. I did read that 330 page document. And it's got a lot of great data, but you know, you can see pretty, pretty frankly, if you sort of boil it down, in the 90s, things were exploding here, right? Building was exploding, population was, was exploding. And the town took measures to, to tamp that down. And it worked, right? The faucet was shut almost completely off, it appears, because we're seeing the results of that. And if you are requiring acre and acre and a half pieces of land to build on, you're going to end up with McMansions. You're not going to get 1,500 square foot reasonably priced homes. So, point being, and getting back to the affordable housing part, if we can fix this part, and I really want to add urgency to this group, if we can start to peel back the low hanging fruit and get more units. This is where I'm going to disagree slightly with Rob. And I do think the units part is, is a part of this. That will hopefully start to ease up some of this, some of the inventory issues that we have and also increase some of the tax basis. So things like building a new high school can be funded and, and, you know, make the town more attractive to folks. So this is a huge issue. And I really think we're sort of on that crux of which way are we going to go with this? Are we going to open the town up or are we going to continue on the path that we're on? CCP is extremely encouraging. But it's been around for two years and nothing's happened yet. And it sounds like we're making strides towards getting some of these things happening. Low hanging fruit, are we looking at areas where we can reduce the zoning to R10, for example, where smaller houses can be built? How about folks that owned double lots that were automatically joined by the town a number of years back? I live in a neighborhood where the majority of those lots were like that. And our former owners, their lot was joined, was joined automatically. Is that something that could be reversed for a period of time to allow people to, you know, turn their lot back into a double lot? If I could do that, perhaps I'd sell my lot and break it off and let somebody build something. We know the builders want to build. Last year, we went to an affordable housing meeting at the, it was up at the Holiday Inn. And Rob, Rob was there. Rob was actually a speaker. And the Rhode Island Builders Association was there and they stood up and said, we've got the money. We've got the materials. We don't have the places to build. And I do think some of that could, could have a tremendous impact, just increasing the units in addition to, you know, deed restricting the homes and that sort of thing. So it's an important issue and it needs, it needs some kind of action and it needs to start happening. And as Jen said, that's what we're hearing from the community. And then just in conclusion, a lot of the things we've been working on, again, we like to call it the capital A and lowercase a affordable. We're not just talking about deed restricted homes, you know, like with the accessory dwelling units. We're really focused on just trying to figure out a way to increase units in general to allow more availability of houses. We think that that's going to be a good, a good starting point. So anyway, thank you.
So quick, Mr. President, if I may, just Christian, I know you do this. This is your, your, your business. I mean, you know, you know, you know, the mortgage market, you know what's going on.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm not convinced. And I'd like to have a little bit more information about taking the double lots and splitting them into two. I don't see how that necessarily increases the availability of affordable housing. Again, if you have a one acre lot and you split it into two half acre lots, most people aren't looking for the surplus acreage. So, you know, you're not necessarily reducing the cost of the lot and you're therefore not necessarily reducing the cost of the house. What am I missing?
So it's, to me, in my business, it's all about, it's all about units. And the part that you might be missing is that I own a nice little buildable lot in Snug Harbor. And I get about five letters a year from builders that are saying, please, for the love of God, sell me that lot so I can build a house. And it's a tiny lot. It's a, it's a, you know, it's, I guess it's about a half acre, right? It actually wraps around a home, another home that I own. And that's why I bought it initially. But if we had, you know, some of, some of these smaller lots, well, like in the neighborhood that I'm in, the lots are 30,000 square feet. And it was, you know, initially they were two 15,000 square foot lots. There's probably in my neighborhood, a good, I don't know, 20 to 30 of those that people own that, where they were forced to, where they were just stuck together, right? There was that, that, that law that, I don't remember when it happened. I guess it was in the 90s where if you didn't partition it and put somebody else's name on it or something, they were automatically joined. So you're opening up smaller lots for smaller building, I guess is basically what it.
But not necessarily affordable. I mean, Snug Harbor might be a good example where a small unit is likely to command a high price because it's a, it's a very desirable location. So I'm not sure we, we increase affordability by that strategy.
A large volume of them should help grease the wheels, I would, I would think.
Can I just jump in to add? I mean, one of the things we've talked about on the collaborative is, is what, what we know now about current demographic changes. And one of the really important changes that we need to address is that the expansion, you know, in households that we're going to see in Rhode Island in the next 10 years is not necessarily population expansion. It's, it's smaller households. Households are getting smaller over the next 10 years so that younger folks are delaying enlarging their family. And so they're in ones and twos. And older folks are kind of, you know, sizing down to families of ones and two. And in this, you can, you know, check in with Rhode Island Housing or Housing Works and they'll verify that this is, this is what's going on. So in terms of housing planning, some of the demand is that we have these folks who are looking for, you know, one and two bedroom, you know, households that, homes that serve one and two person households, right? And we just don't have enough of those in South Kingstown or really in the state. So I think part of our charge to make sure we have appropriate housing for the residents that we have over the next 10 years, but also that it's affordable, right? Like if you're a one or two person household, I mean, is a big four bedroom house affordable? Probably not. It's trying to create appropriate diverse housing to meet all of those needs. And then again, take the pressure off the other parts of the market by letting those folks be able to move into things that fit their family. So that's, that's some of the sort of rationale around what can be done. And I think, you know, the Affordable Housing Collaborative very much cares about making sure that folks who meet those requirements of, you know, 80% or below of the median income having housing. And also that that housing is good because there's a lot of people who are 50% below the median income or 30% below the median income. And they need good housing because they work in all of our commercial enterprises around town, at Dunkin' Donuts and the grocery store and all, you know, all over town. Those folks shouldn't have to commute from Providence to work at our grocery stores. So I think we can do all those things.
I think you're right. The issue is that we know from our experience, the South Shore Country Club is an example of two bedroom units being built right now. And they're selling for half a million dollars. The, the, the size of the unit and the size of the lot does not drive the price down necessarily. Those units are very, very small, two bedroom units, and they are very small lots. They're not, they're not quarter acre lots. They're very small lots. So.
So how do we, how do we get affordable housing for our workforce then? Like what's the, what's the alternative?
This is Paul Jordan, Planning Board. Can I make a comment here? I think, you know, I was on the Affordable Housing Collaborative years ago and we asked Council staff, the planning department to look at zoning around apartments. And I know Rob mentioned this early on in the meeting. You know, accessory dwelling units and cottage zoning, I think, are going to get us partway there. But grocery store clerks are not going to buy a home based on what they're earning at Belmont, even if they're working full time. Where, I've always thought that apartments are just in huge short supply in this town. You know, Rob talked about the three flexes, the six flexes, the apartment complexes. When the, when the new storage units first went up, up on Old Tower Hill Road, I saw that construction. I thought, oh, it's going to be an apartment building. A little bit disappointed to see that it was storage units. But I think, you know, if you want to get there and get there quickly, you know, as an objective, I think looking at, somebody mentioned in a zoning board meeting a couple of weeks ago, it was a lawyer for the applicant, that we have, what was it, less than 3% of the town zone for multi-unit housing or maybe it's even less than that. And I, and I just have thought for years, that's the low hanging fruit for this town.
Thanks, Paul. I see a couple of hands raised. Looks like Rory was first. Rory?
Yeah, I got a few questions about the cottage zoning implementation. Assuming it does go into effect, how would we ensure that new, new development occurs? Would we just kind of rely on existing homeowners to sell their properties to developers? Hopefully the market naturally that occurs through that? This is sort of directed at Rob Zarniski and Jamie Rabbit.
Abel, I can try and answer that.
Please.
Again, the premise behind, Rory, great question, right? Because you're really changing a condition in the zoning regulations to try and attract development. And development typically occurs, now I'm going to say the entry to some of my discussion, five ways. It's either done by the private sector, through a developer. It's done through government. It's done through nonprofits. It's done by an individual or it's done by a combination or a partnership of those. The reg is intended to spark one or all of those from occurring. But it, you know, there, we can't make a developer initiate the utilization of the cottage regulation. It's just another tool in the toolbox that we, he would have at his disposal. In the hopes where there was just a development remodified off of Oak Street by the high school called Magnolia Lane. And it was done in a very conventional manner. I think the result of a little cul-de-sac is six units. Potentially if that developer had cottage regulations available to them, maybe in an infill style, they could have fit 12. At 12, you would have had three units affordable due to incentive requirements. And it would have given the developer density where he probably could make the numbers work. You know, because in those five methods I talked to, there's private sector developments, government, nonprofit, individual and partnerships. Potentially two of those are driven by profit, being the individual in the private sector. Government, nonprofits and a partnership between government and nonprofits isn't necessarily driven by profit. But, you know, we can add tools to the toolbox. We just can't make development happen unless you're more proactive on the incentivizing side. I know there's been some discussions on the AUD about giving tax breaks to someone who brings an AUD online. That may encourage it. I think the cottage regulations, the intent is to try and encourage options to development at an increased density that's acceptable by the community.
Thank you, Jamie. Another question about the zoning, would we sort of, will it be recommended that we sort of make it a blanket over all of Peastale? Or would we sort of target specific areas of Peastale for which the zoning could occur?
Rory, another good question. And that's exactly what the planning board, I'll use the term, is struggling with right now. So they have a regulation. They, they're satisfied with the discussion on density, which was eight units per acre, which would require incentive, which would be 10 units per acre for the yield. But the initial regulation stated that it was viable, all future service district. So a map, it was, you know, from the 10,000 foot level, anything within the future service district would be eligible for a cottage style development. The planning board asked us as staff to look at that and help them maybe pare that down a little bit and target perhaps Peastale and Wakefield harder versus all of the areas. But that exact question, Rory, is, is what the board is contemplating right now and the subject of our work session next Tuesday, Jay? I'm losing days of the week, Tuesday.
Got it. Jamie, one last one. You refer to the future services district. What fits into that within South Kingstown?
So you're looking at the area kind of up by URI, heading down 108 into Peastale and cross the river, the Wakefield, circling back up to Lower Tower Hill. And then you have an, an area in northeastern South Kingstown along the river. But again, that's kind of a cottage beach community. And I think that may be something that the planning board takes out right now.
So really Kingston, Peastale, Wakefield, areas within those.
Sewer service.
Like a lower tower hill.
Oh, sewer service, sorry.
That's what it is. And future sewer service area. It's an area identified as, as a place where we would put sewers in the future. So it's those, and it might exist.
Thank you.
All right, I am hearing a little background noise. So if you are not speaking, just remember to mute yourself. Councilwoman, your hand is up next. I believe Paul, your hand is still raised from before. If, also if you raise your hand, please put it down after you've spoken, just so I don't get confused.
So I have a lot of concerns about trying to maintain economic sort of diversity in folks who live here. And right now, we don't, you know, we're seeing the cost of housing raise, you know, I think 10% in the last year. And housing stock in that entry level realm is diminishing. So I'm wondering if maybe exploring something along the lines of shared appreciation loans is something we might want to consider to help entry level home buyers that now the house is 400,000 instead of 350,000 that it was a year ago with applying some more money to the down payment. Their mortgage would stay the same for them. And the homeowner would then pay back that loan when they sold the house. And it would be shared appreciation on the, on the sale price. To me, that's, so I call that kind of the people trust, right? So instead of putting our resources, our town money into buying any more open spaceland, we're now going to put our resources into this program that would allow the, you know, the worker making $50,000 a year to enter the market. Because right now, they, that's just not possible. So I wondered if any, you know, the Affordable Housing Collaborative had ever looked at a program like that, shared appreciation loans.
I'll chime in here. No, actually, we haven't talked too much about that. We've talked quite a bit about, I mean, there's a lot of first time home buyer programs out there for, you know, via, whether they're through Rhode Island Housing or through other various banks, you know, zero down, closing costs included. You can, you can really buy a house with, with no money down and really not. buy a house with, with no money down and really not pay a dime into it. Um, if you need to, there's, you know, loans for folks with tougher credit. And housing has a number of programs where they used to do things like called a silent second or, you know, down payment assistance and that sort of stuff. I haven't heard of anything. If I'm understanding you right, where the town is sort of taking part in, in the down payment. Is that right? Is that, that's sort of what you thought is, Deb?
Yes, it's, it would be a loan. Um, so, you know, Rhode Island Housing, um, does have programs. You're right, but, but they are limited in their scope and the amount of money that's allowed. You know, that the borrower can, can apply for. So Kingston's housing is too expensive for that, right? Um, so what I'm, what I'm thinking about and, and I, you know, I know what happens in other communities. I didn't make this up. Um, is that there's an additional loan given by the town or the, or the housing authority or, or, um, to the home buyer that now brings down the price of that house initially. So the market rate is paid. The seller gets the market rate, but the buyer going into the program now has this additional down payment to keep the mortgage affordable. And they're also now entered the home market, in the South Kingston market.
That's actually, that's a good point because you do get to a point with the conventional loan limits where, you know, if the purchase price is too high, you're right, there is a gap. So in other words, they can get to a level where they can't do 100% financing. So you're right. Um, and, and I do vaguely remember Central Falls doing something similar to this years ago, but I, I made a note of it. Certainly something we can look into and chat about. Absolutely.
Yeah. Abel, if I may, just to, uh, follow up on Councilman Kelso's comment, that they're traditionally called stopgap loans on the housing side. So if someone to on Kristen's point, if, if they only qualify for 275 and entry levels two and a quarter, some housing authorities have a revolving loan fund where they would put $50,000 into that financial package as a stopgap to get that person from, from 275 up to three and a quarter. Some it's forgivable, some it's, you know, as a second, a silent second note. Others it's shared appreciation. And again, those are, to Jen's point earlier, those are little ways of slightly thinking outside the box of how to get that affordable unit. The gift difficulty there is you get one person in and if you, if you do the shared appreciation, the assumption is with that shared appreciation, the next sale won't be for affordability. It'll be for the profit side of it.
That's correct, but as the, you know.
But it gets someone, gets someone into the community who may not be able to, who can be a productive member of the community.
And the ability to build equity.
Yes.
So I think that's important. The, the equity building is, you know, to, to the wealth gap, equity is very important.
And that goes back to, to Rob's point and, and my point on the five kind of sectors that are providing housing, and that's both for ownership and rental, that if you rely on the private sector to solely generate housing, you know, Rob's got the number of 10,000 units in order to get to 10% to, to meet that criteria and you don't know how long that will take. You know, Jay, Brian and I talked about this afternoon, if you leave it completely to the private sector, there may be no affordable units built next year. Because it's dependent on applications to the commission where they're required to build an affordable unit. And that's where the, you know, thinking outside of the box, are there opportunities with a partnership on either the individual governmental nonprofit side where there's a housing trust that has a revolving fund to, you know, use startup money for that. Um, you mentioned the Charleston product, project. That was a 15.5 million dollar plus project. It took six years in the making. And the sound, town of Charleston, um, put a million dollars into that coffer. You know, so low hanging fruit may be low, but it, it still takes time with, with permitting and governmental involvement.
Great, thank you. And, uh, Maria, you've been very patient.
Uh, thank you, Abel. Um, my first, uh, comment was actually, um, something that had to do with, um, Rob's presentation. I totally love the soccer diagram, but I think in order to reflect a practical snapshot, um, in real time, it would be helpful to show the challenges that we face on that diagram as well, particularly with regard to, uh, practical implementation of some of these things. Um, I, I did want to add a couple of things to the general discussion, however. As, uh, folks have stated, um, we really need a multifaceted approach because the tools that we have been using, inclusionary zoning, comprehensive permit, uh, moving forward toward the cottage zoning, which is exciting. Um, accessory dwelling units, um, those are, none of those is really a panacea. Uh, we need a broad approach. Um, I believe that partnerships with nonprofits is a very good direction to be going into. Um, there is a good example of one that was done a few years ago, Habitat for Humanity on Francisco Norring Drive. They had even a design competition associated with that. Very good project. All the units were affordable. And it, it goes without saying that when you partner with a nonprofit and I'm for folks from the Affordable Housing Collaborative can attest to this, it's important to have, um, another entity as part of this, for example, like a Washington Trust, because they can get the the CRA credits, the Community Reinvestment Act credits. Also, I know that there is a housing bond coming up in the referendum. I'm not sure if the majority of those funds have been already theoretically dedicated, but that's something that might help us. Um, also, um, we have the ability to reinstate our fee in lieu of requirement in our ordinance. Um, this allows, uh, particularly for areas in which, um, there are site constraints um, to increase the density, this allows a, um, an applicant to pay a fee. And that fee would then go into a housing trust. The problem with this right now is that in the, um, Low Mod Act, I believe, the fees, regardless of where they go, if they're not used within two years, they go to Rhode Island Housing, which I think is patently unfair. Um, the other thing is that Rhode Island Housing, um, determines the, uh, dollar amount that an applicant would pay for a lot. And that doesn't necessarily reflect, looking at Providence's numbers, what we face in South Kingston. So I think, um, those changes to the legislation would be very helpful. Um, uh, as well as, um, considering, uh, a model and outreach related to the idea of, you know, the expression that it takes a village to raise a child. Um, looking at sort of like the healthy places of design model, um, I know that there's, um, health equity zones that, um, Teresa Tanzi and I believe the Johnny Cake Center has been involved with. I think those are really positive directions, um, that will, um, increase community engagement. Um, so I think we should also be thinking bigger picture along those lines as well.
And Kimaria, uh, I, I'd just like to put a pin in that point for Rob and as we're thinking of goals and objectives. Thinking about working with our state delegation on policies at the state level that allow us to make some of these changes here locally, uh, that we would hope to see that help us.
Three exclamation points and a circle around it. Yep.
Well, one other, uh, thing that I have heard a couple of times is, you know, the town working with, uh, as a partnership with a, a nonprofit here. And I don't think we've sort of explored that in our goals and objectives, but certainly something that we can look into. We have started developing some seed money in the Affordable Housing Trust with the, the bifurcation of the real estate transfer tax. And I, I heard somebody mentioning bonding, uh, around affordable housing. I know we were already talking about bonding in all sorts of areas. But, uh, you know, I, I'd be interested in hearing more, uh, from uh, Affordable Housing Committee members and Planning Board Committee members, whether it would be wise for our town to think about bonding, uh, to create more of that seed money. Uh, you know, if we wanted to do something like a revolving loan fund, uh, would we capitalize it with bond funds? Would the, that real estate transfer tax be creating, uh, an income stream stream that would allow us to, to pay for all the interest accruals on that bonding? That's sort of the way it's worked for open space, right? Uh, we created the, the open space acquisition fund and, and the real estate transfer tax was really going in there just so that it could pay off the, the debt service for purchases made with bonded money. Um, is that a model that we could look at for affordable housing? So just some questions to throw out there. Uh, Pete, uh, you're next.
Thanks, everybody. I have just a random list of things from conversation that I'm going to just throw out there and then kind of go. Rob mentioned something about houses. I would, I just assume the supply and demand effect would come into play. Christian, you would know as a mortgage guy, if there's more property, the value will go down because there's more competition, uh, that I see. You know, again, as a business owner in town, I have 50 employees. Uh, I think three can afford to live in South Kingston and we pay pretty well. Um, so there's not just that big A, there's the low A, the small A that we need to work on. Uh, the piece that Rob was mentioning about different opportunities, I don't, the cost of construction workers will just keep increasing because such a lack of it. So I don't think you're going to save there. Building technology is definitely a possibility. I just think we're talking decades, not weeks or months or years, you know? So I think that's just something to think about. Uh, Jen had mentioned something about mixing this housing into the community, which I think is a huge thing. I think it's the stigma of just putting affordable housing in one area and then not mixing it in everywhere. So when everyone keeps mentioning Peastale, we need to be talking about Wakefield and Kingston. And wherever we else, wherever else we can, so that it's just not in one location. I think, um, the old saying, nothing moves slower than government is so painfully true here. Rob mentioned, we talked about this two years ago. I did some quick research for this meeting. We, in five years, we added 19 units, 19 affordable units. That's that is, we did 220 units. We, we added 19, um, which is pretty bad. So I would say the good news, I'm not all negative. The good news is all the people on this screen can fix this problem. Planning, town council, we can change zoning rules. We can, we can do all this. So everybody here, so all the people watching, these are the people you need to hold accountable. You need to say, hey, you guys have the power to do this. We can do it. So all the players are here. It's good to hear it. I think we need to act. I know last year, I think it was, I get the years confused with COVID, but, uh, EDC came in and we had a big meeting with them and they talked about Tower Hill Road development, about putting mixed use and units up above. We haven't talked about it since. We haven't done anything with it. So we can sit here and talk about this or we can put some action behind it. So I want to help. I want to be a team player. I want to push. Uh, I'm, I'm good for that kind of stuff. I think we just need to stop talking about it and do something about it. And I think the other piece is the private sector. Uh, the builders talk about this. Uh, I'm on the Rhode Island Builders Association Board. And I think when I heard this the first time, I said, sure, they're saying this because they're all builders and they just want to build more stuff. The builders build the plan. The town picks the plan. If you go through and look at all the communities, the plan that the town puts in, the zoning ordinances, the builders build to that. If you look at Charleston, Narragansett, South Kingston, Johnston, Providence, you follow those rules, the builders, they're smart, they're going to make money. So they're going to go in there and build to that. So we need to develop a plan for those builders to come in and build that plan. So I think it's, I mean, obviously it's not that simple, but we just need to set the, the rules of the game and the private market will come in and figure it out. Thank you.
So, Mr. President, I just, I want to, I, I think, you know, I, I think the world of Pete. He's, he's very good at this. He knows this business incredibly well. We do have to think broadly though. I mean, supply and demand tends to work out, but we've got an extraordinary demand. Um, the demand is, is for housing in South Kingston among people who live in New York City who haven't even heard of South Kingston yet. So the, the demand is, is interesting in our case. It's quite possible that new units get built, but outsiders drive up the price anyway. And that's what we're seeing in, in the two units, uh, the two bedroom units down in, uh, the Gravely Hill area. And the other, the other thing that I think we've got to keep in mind is while it's been 19 units at the ratio, 19 units of affordable housing at the ratios that we've been talking about, that's 171 market units that have been built in that same period of time. So we are, we are in fact changing the character of the community, even while we're only getting 19 units again to this uh, this state model not being the solution for South Kingston. We've got to figure out how to use the units we've got and how to do infill in different ways, I would suggest.
Right. I see your hand. I just want to, I, one thing that occurred to me, I think it was Christian who brought it up was, you know, these, uh, double units, the, or double lots that were made into single lots back in the nineties. Is, I mean, is it possible to create a policy that would allow those to be broken up? If, say, the, the, the owner was willing to make, you know, somehow make that second lot into an LMI lot. Is that, is that a possible policy? Like, seems like that would be a, a small thing, obviously, just another little tool in the toolbox around this stuff, but just an idea of it. Brian Wain.
Uh, yeah, I think I see Amy nodding her head and I'm thinking the same thing she probably is. Uh, so she can probably answer that last question of yours. But the point I wanted to make was, um, you know, I agree completely with what Rob is saying that under the the state's concept of creating capital A affordable units that that trying to build your way out of it is a never ending problem. Um, and one of the things that we've been talking about is trying to come up with some creative ways to look at rehabbing existing uses and making them into affordable units. In that way, not only are you creating the affordable unit, but you're taking one out of the market rate pile at the same time and therefore you're actually doing a little bit more to drive up um, the affordable units, at least in the way the state is looking at it. Um, so I, I think that this is something that I'd like to work with the, uh, the collaborative on and trying to find, um, you know, rehabilitation money for creating LMI units. And it could be a, a huge uh, support for some of the people out there in our community who might actually be in houses qualify to own a affordable unit uh, and need some help improving their property at the same time.
That's right. Uh, one other point, I just, for, Peter, thanks for bringing it up. Uh, is, you know, we did have that big discussion, maybe it was a couple of years ago, hard to remember. Uh, but, you know, around that mixed use, commercial slash residential use around Old Tower Hill Road. You know, I think a lot of us have been waiting for this Horstley Witten report to really, uh, come up with some sort of recommendations around, you know, zoning ordinance updates. Uh, thinking that it, it would be part of that. Um, but I, I agree. I think it is time that we make that happen. You know.
Yeah, but on this point, Pete's exactly right. We own that. We, we have not moved fast enough on these things. He's exactly right.
Uh, Steve, I see your hand is raised. And you are muted at the moment, Steve.
So Christian's point about, uh, some of the merged lots around town, a lot of those were in Green Hill, Mattoonik, East Mattoonik, Snug Harbor. And those were all summer communities that were plotted with small cottage lots for, you know, a lot of time, a lot of them didn't have, uh, you know, service of water. They were just, you know, places that people would go to cool off and swim and maybe spend the night, but, you know, didn't have toilet facilities. But a lot of those are in environmentally sensitive areas that don't have sewers. So, you know, that would be kind of problematic, um, to, uh, unmerge those lots and in those type of areas. And as we're seeing now in a, a project that's proposed in Mattoonik, that, uh, it's a two bedroom unit and they're proposing 600,000. it's a two bedroom unit and they're proposing six hundred thousand, you know, for two bedrooms. And it's, you know, it's, it's market, like somebody said, it's market driven. But again, if we're five hundred units short on affordable in this town right now, that's basically a subdivision larger than Teft Hill. And as Rob said, we're not gonna build our way out of it. You know, we're building ten lot subdivisions, we're getting, you know, two affordable units, so we're getting twelve. You know, you're covering, one unit covers that ten lot subdivision, one unit goes to our deficiency. We're never gonna get there without going to, you know, multifamily housing or six plexes or, you know, we just need more dense housing in the core, Wakefield, Peacedale, that are on the sewer and water. And I think that's the only way we're gonna get those numbers up. Unfortunately, that doesn't really spread it throughout the town. But if we're gonna get anywhere near our goals, we have to go to that type of, of high density housing units.
Steve, Pete, your hand up again, or is that from before?
Yeah, no, I just want to add two more things. I'm sorry. I don't think we can build our way out of it at the rate of getting one unit for twelve. I know we were on the other night where, you know, we're as a board, we're like fighting to get one extra unit out of the developer and it's barely putting a dent into this. I think we have to change the rules like Steve said and look at density and six plexes and so on and so forth. I think the other piece that I just want to be clear about too is building little smaller homes doesn't mean the price is gonna be cheap to build those. Technically, they're much more expensive to build a smaller house. I mean, we just finished building two and, you know, granted, one was really fancy, it was a little jewelry box, but it was five hundred and forty bucks a square foot. Another one was more reasonable, was three hundred and seventy-eight dollars a square foot. So you have, you still have a toilet, you still have a shower and you still have a, you know, a sink in the bathroom. If it's three times the size or this, it's still, you know, the, the cheap space is the bedroom, the living room, that stuff's the cheap space. You have all this other infrastructure that you have to put in. So, you know, if we're talking about taking a small lot, I think the idea of adding more units is a great idea, but if we're talking about putting a eleven hundred square foot house on a half acre land or a quarter acre land, it's gonna be hard to keep that cost lower. And, and when we talk about little houses in the cottage style development and we can fit eight units on a one acre parcel where they could buy the parcel and cut the cost of that, I, I see that more reasonable. So I just don't want people to think we build smaller houses, they're gonna be so much cheaper because that technically isn't gonna happen.
Thanks. Important point. Susan.
Hi, everybody. I have some sort of random thoughts that I think I'd want to share. I've been taking some notes. I would like to agree with what a lot of you have said, that we cannot build our way to affordable housing in this town because the system that we have now, I think, is broken. And I think to save the character of our town and the things we love best, building, building, building isn't going to help us to retain that character that we like. But I do wonder whether or not we have the ability to change our comp permits or our inclusionary zoning to just bump up our demand for how much of those developments are affordable. Right now, we're at twenty percent on inclusionary, it actually ends up at like seventeen percent or twenty-five percent on comp permits. Can we say, you know, it's a highly desirable town and everyone wants to live here, if you want to do a development, it has to be fifty percent deed restricted LMI? So that we could start achieving that goal a lot faster. And I don't know if that's legal or that's possible or if it's desirable, but I would think that as Peter said, if you set a standard, folks will figure out some way to work toward it. So I don't know if that's a possible thing, but I'd also like to point out that we know we have a shortage of apartments in this town. And we live in a college town. How will we ever retain those apartments for year round family residences when student rentals are so cash cow for folks who own houses they can rent to students? Throw in two months over the summer for vacation rentals and I think these apartments will just be snatched up by students long before families can get to them. And then likewise, our smaller cottages or less expensive condos, I think, will be consumed by folks who retire in this town and want to sort of maintain a residence here, but go travel the world and keep their, you know, three month of a year condo here. A less expensive apartment being held by retirees or snowbirds is never going to help our working class stay in smaller, less expensive condos. And then my last question is sort of the way a conservation organization buys up the building rights for the development rights for like a piece of farmland. Is there a way for us to purchase the market portion of a condo? If a condo is going to sell for a hundred thousand dollars market or eighty thousand dollars LMI, is there a way for us as a town or there is an organization that basically can buy that upmarket portion? So that home or apartment or condo could always be held in an LMI category? Like, is there a way to buy that difference? So, so far, those are my thoughts for tonight. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. I do not have the answers. I believe for the first one, it would probably require a change in state law, which is still not a reason for us not to have it as a goal. Again, one of those things that we could advocate for with our delegation. Other, any response to those questions?
Able, if I can, Jamie Rabbit. In order to change the inclusionary requirement from twenty to fifty percent, you would have to get the legislature to change the comp permit from twenty-five to like fifty. Because if you raise the include, and Amy's saying no, but if, if you, if you increase the inclusionary at the local level, developers are just gonna utilize the state law and do a comp permit. So they're, they're related. So if you, if you up the inclusionary number internally, a change has to happen at the state level. Permit required forty percent, then the town could easily have an incentive regulation at thirty percent, because again, it's more friendly or potentially to come into the town where it's already allowed at thirty percent versus comp permitting at forty or fifty. But you would need a change at the state level to acquire a, a higher density and higher requirement under the comp. Otherwise, there's no incentive for someone to use the local regulations. You know, in essence, Susan, you'd have to change the comp permit to a higher number and just have the inclusionary floating below that.
Right.
So now comp permits twenty-five, inclusionary is twenty. If those move to forty-five and thirty, you probably have more people just coming in under inclusionary.
So on, on the issue of buying rights, one of the things that the Affordable Housing Collaborative had explored was the possibility of just paying people to deed restrict their property. So the, the classic scenario is a low income senior citizen has a home, the taxes are increasing, the, the cost of maintaining the property is increasing. And you go to the, the property owner and say, or you have a program that says, if you deed restrict this property, your tax bill is cut in half or your, your tax bill is eliminated completely for a period of time. So there are ways to, to buy rights. I mean, we can always buy, we can enter, enter into contracts with people to buy rights. But the question is, how do you structure such a program? I've just outlined a tax reduction approach. Other communities elsewhere in the country have actually paid people, they've actually given them cash for deed restriction.
The sense of a reverse mortgage, that you're gonna loan them money in a cash payment for that restriction to be placed on the land records as an LMI unit.
And, and to Brian's point, what that approach does, it takes the unit that that property owner is in and takes it off our market rate from the, the numerator and takes it off the denominator or adds it to the denominator. So it has a double effect. It impacts the ratio twice beneficially.
I, I would note that this is something that has actually been under discussion with the collaborative lately, and I did call a representative at the state and sort of float this idea and got a really convoluted, noncommittal responses to whether or not they would accept that as state counted affordable housing. And I know that Christian did some research with, involving the town of Stowe, Massachusetts, who did exactly that, only to have the state of Massachusetts refuse to count all of the properties that they invested in, in their program. So I think it's, I think it's a very intriguing idea. We've sort of backburnered it for the time being. But I think at some, at some point, we'll bring it back to the, the surface and see if we can flush out a more substantial concept of how that would work and, and float it past the state.
This, this case is, is a good example of this sort of shift in the mind frame that, that I think needs to happen. The reason the states are suspicious about it is because the state programs are designed to be production programs. And since no unit is being produced, the fact that you've identified a low income person and you've deed restricted isn't good enough. What they're really after is the increase in the number of units. Not the number of units that are committed to low and moderate income occupancy, but rather the total number of units. It is a, it is essentially a building program. It is not a low moderate income resident protection program. It is a construction program.
Thank you. Susan, your, your hand is still up, I don't know if.
Sorry, but before I go, is there anything that we can do about the large number of apartments that are being used as temporary or student rentals? And the number of condos that are being taken by temporary or part year residents? And pulling those out of our housing stream? To contain the student rental, I mean, we're at, what are we at, thirty something percent now of student rentals in our town? I've forgotten the number, I had it somewhere before. Is there a way to contain that before it becomes out of control in this town and therefore a family can never rent a house or an apartment in this town?
I don't know if anybody wants to try and answer that or has an answer.
Really, the only thing I can think of would be some sort of an incentive program. You've either, you've got, either gotta treat them differently depending on, on the use that is made, or you've got to economic subsidy or benefit to someone for engaging in the activity that you want them to engage in.
Yeah.
The other, some other college communities have been either incentivized through favorable zoning regulations of allowing developers to build the housing next to the need. And that it's tough in South Kingstown because you have URI proper and it's surrounded by either agricultural land, protected land or single family housing development. In other communities, they would rezone some of that single family land or that agricultural land to allow multifamily, in essence, housing for students. Stores Connecticut has done it, Penn State, Syracuse University and others have done that. When the university makes a decision, they're gonna let the private sector provide housing and not build any more dorms on campus at the magnitude to keep up with the enrollment. You know, I'm not sure if that's palatable right now in South Kingston to rezone areas around URI to allow, you know, student type housing to be built. University Stores Common, if anybody has heard of, that in Mansfield, Connecticut, next to University of Connecticut, was built on that premise. The University of Connecticut was not going to build any new dormitories that the private sector was going to. And that ability for having rental units provided the financing for that project. So rental units are adjacent to the university, not necessarily intermixed in the town of Mansfield or in Wyndham Abutting. They are being built around the campus by the private sector.
All right. Thank you both. Councilman Bergner, your hand was raised previously. Did somebody answer the question that you had or? Okay, Maria Mack.
Thank you. As my fellow board members will attest to, I, on a regular basis, bring up Old Tower Hill Road. I think it's an opportunity that we should really strongly consider. It is perfect for mixed use. A couple of years ago, we did a collaborative project with URI Senior Landscape Studio. I believe some of these drawings are on their website and I think that's something that we should seriously look at.
I, I have them all because I was in that.
All right. I, I want to put a pin on that one again, if that's not referencing our goals and objectives, I think it is something that we've talked about long enough that it should be in there as an objective, probably. Jen.
Josh had his hand up first. Josh, do you care? Okay, sorry, did we cut the line? I just wanted to just reinforce around the URI point because I feel like we don't really talk about this a lot on the Affordable Housing Collaborative, or I, I just haven't heard a lot of conversation about it in town. And, you know, if we're not sure with how the community feels about trying to have more apartments or other kind of housing near the university, I think it's something we need to explore. Particularly because it's a transportation hub area as well. And I think at one point, the state had called it sort of the economic opportunity zone around the train station Kingston area. That if, if there are going to be places where we have more density and it's gonna be Kingston, Peacedale, Wakefield, that might be truly an opportunity zone. It might be a place where it makes sense to have something like that. And I realize you know, there are definitely gonna be people who disagree with me on that, but I think that that's a community conversation that we should, should, you know, put on the priority list to start exploring because I think it is one of the areas where we need to understand whether it's a no go or whether it is actually an opportunity. And, and also I think people, you know, we worry about the student housing, we have to engage with the university around planning for this and be able to answer to the community, like, well, how's that conversation going?
Jen, I, I will note that we did discuss this a little bit on Monday and I think there is a lot of interest, certainly at the council level, to look around. And we talked about it in sort of the idea of commercial development and partnering with, you know, trying to create spaces for innovative business that can partner with the university's research and development activities, but you could also do mixed use development there with both, you know, commercial and residential apartments mixed in with commercial space. So I think that that's all part of that conversation. And expand sort of on what we were marking down on Monday. Josh.
Okay, so I've got a number of different points here, so I'll try to be pretty quick. So just the way you just said, Jen, about the opportunities on, just to note the, the reason for that and the language around that was around a program that was available for investment and tax benefits for investment, the opportunities on program. So unless that's re-upped, it may not, it'll be a different, I think it's still a good conversation in terms of what development opportunities there may be, but just to note that that was a very specific sort of moment in, in tax advantages for investment. So the other thing was kind of responding to something that Susan had said earlier about, you know, not building ourselves out of this and also not like going to, I think I was hearing sort of hyper development. I think one of the things I appreciated about the Horstley Witten study was that it was, I think, pretty measured about looking at ways to, to increase housing affordability and ways, increase housing in general, increase this missing middle that we've talked about in ways that are consistent with the our villages and consistent with our town so that it doesn't, you know, I think sometimes when you start talking about this, people say, oh gosh, you're gonna, you know, you want us to become Warwick and, and I think that's, you know, or, or it's gonna be sprawl or it's gonna be all of these other things that people can get nervous about. Not saying that's what you're saying, Susan specifically, but, but I think one of the things that the Horstley Witten study did well was to show the types of missing middle housing that we already have to some extent and where those types of things could fit in town in a way that would be consistent with the character of our, our town. So that's one point. Another point is keep bouncing around and it's just putting an idea out there. And I don't know, you know, another avenue to think about is you're talking about land, Rob, and dividing land. And that's not necessarily, you know, the the solution we may think it is. I think I keep, I keep bouncing around on ownership of land and and that, you know, if if land keeps driving the 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 price up, you know, I know I've, I used to be on the board of a organization called the Cooperative Development Institute. And they worked on a very innovative kind of project around, they call the resident owned communities. And it was cooperative ownership. So I think there's some interesting maybe models around thinking about land as as a way of thinking about housing prices as well. The other piece I wanted to mention is I was at that meeting a couple of years ago with the business owners at Old Tower Hill Road. I was very happy to see that the work that the Economic Development Committee did, the survey that they did leading up to that meeting. And then the presentation that they did at that meeting was very well received by the business owners in terms of the type of development that could happen. Again, could happen consistently with something that we'd want to see. I mean, I think most people in town would say they prefer the part of, you know, Main Street that's closer to, say, you know, High Street up to, you know, I don't know, say Columbia Street or or beyond over like what Old Tower Hill Road. Old Tower Hill Road is less sort of characteristic of what we like about South Kingston. I think most people would say that. And so there's a way to develop Old Tower Hill Road in a way that could be consistent, you know, move things closer to the the street development closer to the street parking behind and under, you know, put housing mixed usage as well in a way that would be consistent. And then the last point is just shifting as we start talking about this accessory dwelling unit piece of the conversation that that the Affordable Housing Collaborative has been talking about a fair amount. I think that is also getting at that question of how do we get year round, smaller units that may be available for rental in a way that increases that type of missing middle stock, right? That 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 we know that sometimes if you just put smaller units, you know, that the market is driven towards student rentals in the in the academic year and summer rentals in, you know, in the off season there. But I think, you know, as we talk about ADUs, I think there's an opportunity to think about a different type of smaller units that can can meet some of the need in our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Josh and Rory.
Just like to talk a little bit more about the accessory dwelling regulation. Jamie, can you just sort of explain to us how it would work? The amount exempt from taxation, why or why not we would limit those eligible to participate in the first few years? Can you just kind of work through some of that with us?
Right before we get to that, Rory, because I think that that's the final part of our our meeting tonight. We're just going to do the ADU discussion. Were there any final comments sort of on the discussion that we've had up to this point? We are two hours deep now. We should probably get to the U discussion, but wanted to give anybody, Councilman Berger. Are you muted?
Two, two, sorry, two unrelated questions. One, what are the ramifications if we don't meet the 10% housing stock affordable? And then the second question is related to cottage zoning. When I read through the things that we were sent, fifteen little houses on an acre seemed like a lot to me. It seems very dense. It's, I, I, you know, I don't have a sense of scale on that, so that number seems like a lot. Because I don't know, where would, between a parking, parking and and all of that, I'm wondering, how does that work? And I know we have a one image, one development in Rhode Island that we see. But how did you get, how, how did that become the number? Because I'm, I don't know, even in the lot, any Greenwich, it seems to be like the lots here, I guess in South King County could be oddly shaped. You know, you're never going to have that perfect little accessible things accessible with a road. So how does fifteen fit? So two questions.
Thank you. I'll I'll try and answer them in the order you you stated. With regards to the 10%, the real kind of carrot and stick for that is is the Rhode Island legislation that states that if a community doesn't meet its 10% of LMI units, that you are susceptible to what's called a comp permit application. And a comp permit application allows a developer to come into your community and alter or request to alter the underlying zoning classification. So in an example, if someone had a 10 acre piece of land and it was zoned one acre, we'll call R forty, forty three thousand five sixty. So they could get 10 house lots. But the fact that you don't meet the 10% threshold allows someone to do a comp permit and perhaps propose a density of not one unit per acre, but four units per acre. If it was classified as single family housing, they could potentially propose to do a multifamily condo project under the comp permit. Once you're over the 10%, you're not, a developer is not eligible to use the comp permit process. So that that's the only thing that comes into play when you're not under or under or over the 10%. With regards to the cottage regs, I want to say you made a couple of keen observations. The information that you received from Rob was a PowerPoint presentation that I utilized to spark a conversation with the planning board about density. Their initial regulation that they passed and forwarded to council and then put on hold was up to 12 units per acre. They have since, after a meeting three weeks ago, looking at those exact slides that you did, the representations of the development in West Concord, Massachusetts, East Greenwich, Rhode Island, as well as the examples from Portland, Oregon, and California. They're now looking at eight units per acre, which does qualify for the incentive zoning, which would be two units or maximum of 10 units per acre. And to your point, you would need a perfect piece of land to get that density. You know, and again, a lot of properties are oddly shaped in the community. And if you look at the slide from West Concord, Massachusetts, that's a 3.7 acre piece of land. But there's really only about a 1.25 acres buildable. So although there's a of of low density per acre, because it's 3.7 acres, there's actually a high density per acre of buildable land. And again, I have access to those slides tonight if the the rest of the members wanted to understand that discussion. But again, in our evaluation of looking at the zoning boundaries, there's even discussion of potentially having three types of standards for cottage regs, a six unit per acre density, and eight unit per acre density, and a maximum of 10 unit acre per density. Kind of wheel and spoke approach that immediately adjacent to, you know, the downtown cores of Wakefield and Peace Dale, there are 10 units per acre, and then they go out a little bit, 10, eight, six, as you get to the peripheral of those zones. But those slides were intended to invoke the exact conversation that occurred at the planning board. And, you know, I applaud them for for tackling that issue.
Thanks. And then just how do, I guess, because I haven't seen the Horstley-Witten report, how does, how do all of these elements tie together? So do they? I mean, is that, is that, are they all coming out of that? And how, what, what, what was the impetus for cottage zoning and accessory dwellings and?
So cottage zoning and accessory dwell, we talked about the missing middle. And the missing middle in essence is from that single family home to large scale multifamily housing, or we'll use the term large apartment complex. And part of the kind of single family approach, low hanging fruit, is a single family that adds an AUD, whether it's internal to the unit or above an existing garage, or the addition of an outbuilding that has that AUD. It doesn't really change the the large scale character of a community because it, they're small in nature with regard to the AUD. The cottage reg is the ability to have the same scale of some of the existing homes that are within the community. If you drive down High Street by the town hall and you look at the houses surrounding in a budding High Street, a lot of the older housing stock from the 50s and 60s are those 1,000 square foot to 1,200 square foot homes, which only have an eight to 900 square foot footprint with a bedroom in in the eaves on the second half story. So that's where a lot of that came out of. And it's one of those tools or techniques that's been tested throughout communities in the United States and Europe as attributable and also gives people a sense of place and and belonging to a community versus just this one or two bedroom condo unit. Again, they're, they're kind of a spin of the condo unit, but they're built around a common core to to build that sense of place or that sense of neighborhood. Building from that, if you notice in the handout that I gave you with regards to the design standards, I think I have it listed as design standard bulletin one or bulletin A. The intent is there'll be a bulletin B, a C, a D, and an E. And there'll be a representative design standard for duplex. And then the triplex, fourplex, sixplex, not only what the style and architecture of those are with regards to bulk and form, but also how they would look on a hypothetical development lot. Right to a retail complex that has first floor retail office with second and possibly third floor residential units above it. So we're building to that and gearing up for that. If I could screen share, I could show you how we get from single family to multifamily with the housing types in the middle. I'm not sure.
Well, let me get to these other folks who have raised their hands first, Jamie. Pete, you're.
Rob got kicked out. He's in the attendees, I think.
I noticed he was missing. If we could bring Rob back in, that'd be good.
I just, I just wanted to follow up on the Deb mentioned something about what happens if we don't hit the 10% number. I think the big piece that you, we have to keep in mind, and Jamie brought this up, is we don't get to control what happens. The developer does, the state level does, SHAB does, all these other people get to determine what happens in our town. And I think, so that's something that's scary, right? And I think the other piece that we have to think about too is, and this is not a fear tactic by any mean, but there are places in California where the state comes in and says, okay, you guys are not meeting this requirement. We're going to tell you what to do and how you do it. And I think if this goes to town, you know, to Providence, and they start voting on, they don't give a crap at about people in South Kingston. They're going to say, well, you need this amount of housing here. We don't care, just get it done. So I think if we're more proactive, we we can, we can plan where it's going to go instead of being told or being twisted into where it's going to go.
Thank you, Pete. Jen.
Sorry, guys, I'm still getting used to all my buttons on these Zooms. I don't zoom as much as you. Before we go into the nitty gritty, which I think I agree with Abel, we probably need to get into a little bit of that. And we, and we have been discussing some technical stuff. I just felt like there was one other piece we haven't really talked about very much, but I think is important to this discussion of producing more affordable housing. And that's really sort of the equity side of affordable housing. You know, the the history of housing and and also the history of a lot of people being shut out of wealth creation just because of the way our town and our country started, where people were enslaved and people were prevented from working to make the same money. People were prevented from marrying people who are white, all kinds of things in our history sort of pushed people out of these opportunities that that other people have. And and we've spent a lot of time talking about homeownership and and, you know, wealth creation, and I think that's important. But I think we need to also keep in mind, there's folks in our subsidized housing who for generations maybe were prevented from having any other option than to have a subsidy because of all of these other ways that they were marginalized and that it's harder to get ahead. And people who've gone through that still deserve the same kind of quality, safe, healthy housing. And we do have some housing stock in town that I think everybody would agree needs to be updated. Now, whether that's, you know, the town's job entirely, you know, we can still be proponents of that, whether it's, you know, a nonprofit running that housing or the federal government running that housing. I also wanted to say with with regard to that, this idea of missing middle housing is sort of intriguing as an opportunity for people to get into the market when the single family market might be really hard to get into. So if maybe you're, you're someone who might be able to get into the housing market, you know, they used to call the multifamilies because multi generational families would buy them. And one generation would live on floor one and another on floor two and the other on floor three. But the family could go in together and get this house, you know, and then pass it on, pass it on down again and have that equity and that wealth creation. So I just don't want us to go into the technical side and forget that while we're talking about this huge swath of households that we want to help in South Kingston, that there's a lot of folks living in subsidized housing that I think are frustrated because they feel like, you know, the quality of their housing isn't great because of where the funding source comes from or the motivation or the political will. And also for, you know, all the things that we've mentioned before, that folks really don't want to be living in a giant neighborhood. They want to be part of a neighborhood that's part of the whole community. So I just want us to keep that in mind as we're moving forward. I think the missing middle piece maybe is one of those interventions that might potentially really help with that. Thanks.
Thank you, Jen. Right. I see no other hands raised at this moment, so I am going to. Jamie, if you wanted real quickly to pull up that graphic, just to show us sort of what you're thinking.
I will do that if.
Then we'll move to the ADU discussion.
Get my screen share. Just bear with me one moment.
And while you do that, Jamie, I do want to say thank you again for bringing that last point up, Jen. I think that is a whole nother big discussion that we have to have a work session around, around equity in South Kingston. So I look forward to you being part of that conversation, everybody else as well. Certainly, hopefully, the conversation we're having tonight helps address some of those issues.
Can everybody see that, Abel?
Yes, we can.
I'm just gonna. Of course, it's sorry, not on that slide. Pull up one more. So is that better for everybody?
Yes, we can see that.
So again, in essence, the discussion here is, you know, starting from, starting from the left, you would have single family housing. And you have a lot of the cottage style development that's being shown. What the commission's contemplating in their regulations right now, the planning board is the cottage core or that cottage style development was was that single family style housing that you have in South Kingston centered around our cottage core as infill development. Then the next, you know, steps are talking about duplexes, multiplexes, townhomes. And so you get into the more traditional apartment complex. And then what, you know, below this, and this is from Thompson Placemaking, is also looking at that retail where you take the Norman Clay to the small retail, and then you move it into the mixed use where you have that first floor retail office space. And then you have first, second floor residential. This was brought up earlier about density. And this is just a quick look at a cottage core as it relates to infill within a single family neighborhood. This is. This is six units. So again, there's discussion at the planning board level of, right now, eight units with two incentive for a total of 10. How does that relate to the community? You know, and to the point, you know, another example of how that relates next to single family development. This development that I showed on the slide happens to be next to a commercial parking, commercial building with a parking lot. So it makes us middle, and then a couple other examples. Again, typical cottage court, this is seven units. Excuse me, I'm sorry. This is 11 units. And these are typically 1,000 square feet per unit. Again, the site that those units are in this community on an 18,000 square foot lot, so that's just under a half acre. And they're putting eight units on that half acre.
I think it does help to see those visualizations and see how it can fit in such a small space. Intriguing type of development. I think there are definitely spots in our town that are going to be able to take advantage of that. All right, that being. Let's move this discussion to what we'll soon be seeing in terms of the accessory dwelling unit.
Brian, you want to lead us in this discussion since you've been.
Brian, yeah, Brian has developed some draft language. I do have access to that language. Brian, if you want me to put that up.
The tax language?
The potential draft ordinance.
Yeah, no, that's really very.
Still working on that one?
At this point, so yeah, I would not want to throw that up. Yeah, so the ADUs have been attacked from a couple of different angles. This was one of the trio of initial horsely written projects, which is done and was aimed at easing up on some of the restrictions for creating accessory dwelling units, particularly in the sewered areas where they could easily be accommodated. So hopefully that will attract some more interest in creating that kind of development. And the other avenue that we've taken to, again, try and incentivize it is to look at the taxation element. And we're looking at approaching it from two different avenues. As we started off earlier in the evening, talking about capital A affordability being state-recognized low-to-moderate-income housing and lowercase affordability simply being housing that is inexpensive in comparison to some of the town's housing stock. So from a tax perspective, what we are going to propose to do is to abate the taxes on any new living space created for an accessory dwelling unit for a period of five years after the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. That would be for any and every unit created regardless of whether or not there's a deed restriction placed on the property. We're simply trying to increase the production of these units. And for anybody who's not familiar with it, under our zoning ordinance, an ADU is 750 square feet, one bedroom occupied by two people. There are some other restrictions, but that basically sums it up pretty easily. The other tax approach would be a tax exemption for a period of 30 years for any ADU that is deed restricted as a state-recognized low-moderate-income housing unit for the 30-year minimum. If they deed restrict it for longer, we could exempt it from taxes for longer. But I think most people will just go with the 30 years. Basically, under state law, any house that qualifies as low mod is entitled to an exemption. So it's really not extending something that doesn't already exist. So that's basically it in a nutshell.
So I'm going to just sort of summarize some of the benefits of what the Affordable Housing Collaborative has come up with here. One of the nice things about this approach is that it takes the land price piece out of the equation. This is property that's already owned by the developer. The person who's building the unit already owns their backyard, and they're constructing the unit on their own land. So we're removing the thing that folks often say is driving the cost here, the cost of land. We're also doing fill. So we're seeing this kind of development in the sewer area or the sewer service area, the future sewer service area. It were smaller than the future sewer service area. This ADU proposal is only for properties that are currently served by sewer. So it's, you know, it's also helping the development happen where you want to see the development without encroaching on the open spaces. And I will note a little pin in this. Tax exemption or tax abatement, not sewer usage abatement. There will be sewer fees associated with these properties because they will be produced and will contribute to the maintenance of the sewer system, but it's not taxed for property tax purposes is the idea. The idea of doing it for all units for the first five years sort of goes on the premise that it provides an incentive for producing the type of units that we know we need. We're going to need more of these small units, more of these one-bedroom, two-bedroom units. There is a question for the council to address when this recommendation comes about whether one unit, one bedroom is too small, whether 750 square feet is too small. There was a good deal of discussion about possibly going to 1,000 square feet and two bedrooms. That is still a live issue, a live question to be answered. But these are the types of units that Jen rightly noted, we're going to see an increased demand for. And then the third thing that's really nice about this approach is that it does facilitate multi-generational occupancies, if not of a single unit, if not of a single house, at least of the property. So what we will expect to see is a lot of these units being built for rental income, which again is beneficial to the residents who are currently here. So they don't have a tax burden, but they are generating income. And a lot of these units are probably going to be occupied by family members. We're probably going to see seniors moving into the smaller unit and families with the kids moving into the larger house, or the young married couple moving into the parent's backyard for a period of time. It does facilitate multi-generational usages as well. This program, these programs have been very successful in California, and there's not a lot of it around here. We haven't seen huge successful projects in Rhode Island or, last I had looked, not even in Massachusetts or Connecticut, New York. But out West, they're very, they've been very successful. So we're optimistic that this is a good proposal. What I would suggest, though, is we're also nervous about it being too successful. Jamie Gorman was just telling me today, he feels at least a question a day about accessory dwelling units right now. There's a lot of demand out there. There's a lot of people who would like to build these units in their backyard. And I'm a little bit nervous about what we're going to do in terms of loading affluent into the sewer system. And I'm a little bit nervous about what we're doing in terms of loading traffic into the neighborhoods. And I'm a little bit nervous about what the consequences of a full property tax abatement for five years is going to be. I think we need to approach this a little bit cautiously and probably pilot the idea for a year or two so that we're not hit with unexpected consequences right out of the block.
So to answer that a little bit, Rob, we did, we are looking at capping the number of units on an annual basis, at least for the initial run to see what the response is.
All right. Do we want to have some discussion around this ADU policy potential? I am curious, you know, what is the upside or the downside to moving to the 1,000 square foot, two-bedroom versus keeping it at one bedroom and 750?
A couple of things. Flexibility, obviously, the economic benefit to a family that has a two-unit, two-bedroom unit that they can rent is greater than a one-bedroom unit. It also does provide housing potentially for young families. You can have a kid or two kids in a unit with parents when you're up to two bedrooms. So there's that benefit. The downside is really the consequences for infrastructure. It's more affluent, it's more traffic, it's more parking demand, it's more. Right now, we're not too worried about adding burden to the schools, but, you know, it is potentially kids of school age in a two-bedroom unit.
It seems like maybe the middle ground is they're putting the cap on it on the one hand, but then expanding it to the 1,000 foot. Maybe, but. Other thoughts?
I've built, I mean, we've done, I don't know, maybe six or seven over the years, 750 small. If you're going to do 750, you're going to have the older parent, you know, that's the expectation that, you know, most of them turn into be, you know, the kid buys his parents' house and the parent lives in the back all by himself. I think you're going to have to go bigger than 750. And then there's a weird piece about covered space. I know we ran in this to a project before. So like, if you wanted to have a covered entry, that goes against your square footage. Same thing if a covered porch in the back, that would go against your square footage. So 750 goes quick.
Abel, there are a number of communities, and I know one prominent land use attorney in Connecticut is working with the community about potentially, and the American Institute of Architects. We're coming up in essence with pre-approved designs so that, you know, Peter mentioned, you know, if you have a clear set of regulations for builders, it makes it a lot more palatable for them to develop the units within their community. And some of the communities in California has done it, and some areas in Oregon where you want to do AUD, you would go see Jamie Gorman, Jamie, and someone said, what do I need for a permit? And Jamie Gorman would say, if you build this, this design right here, you can pull a zoning permit from me today so long as you have sewer water and access to the property. So there are mechanisms, not only from the incentive side financially, but potentially from the permitting side to incentivize the construction of these.
Right. And that piece would begin to get at one of the other issues that, you know, you worry about with infill, is it infill of the same character or a character that augments the neighborhood it's going into? And now, our ADUs can be additions to existing structures. They do not have to be standalone structures. But when you start building structures in the backyard, you want them to look like the neighborhood they're in. You don't want them to be, you know, stick out like sore thumbs. Now, maybe some innovative designs do fit in, but the point is you want them to look like they belong there.
When does that start looking like elements of form-based code? You know, that you're giving some guidance with regard to that stuff?
It starts to look a little more, well, again, form-based code is a preconceived opinion that you vetted that this density and this form is acceptable to the community. You know, the pre-approved architecture is kind of a hybrid of form-based code because you're taking one step forward. Form-based, I think some of the misunderstanding about form-based code, and I've worked in communities where they've missed this, is they've developed form-based codes without the design component.
Right.
And without that, you just get a box.
Right.
Density, you're not guaranteed you get the look the community's expecting. So again, some of those communities, from a development standpoint, if you're in some areas in, say, Seattle, there's a mix of architecture from that northwestern architecture to someone doing two-seat containers. And if you're doing two-seat containers, to Rob's point, it may be innovative, but that process may be harder than if you brought this pre-approved northwestern architecture with a pitched roof and siding, and you walk into the building and get a permit. The other one, you have to run through four different boards before you may get your approval. But it's a little bit of a spin on form-based.
Yeah, and I think it's an interesting point, you know, that in testing this out, we may have some leeway to, you know, if one of the concerns is making sure that the design and the character of the building is consistent with, you know, the development around it, you know, it may give us more ability to give those kinds of design standards. The other thing I wanted to just mention is a point about our discussions in the Affordable Housing Collaborative about ADUs is the piece about deeded affordable housing. So if there's a piece in what we've come up with that if it were deeded affordable, that that tax abatement would be for the full 30 years, so long as it remains deeded affordable. And so that's another piece that could incentivize the affordable piece.
Josh, just a question about that. One of the things that I remember you guys had been talking about is you could always convert your five-year abatement into an exemption in the sixth year if you deed restricted it at that point. So the idea was to sort of get people hooked, get the units built, and then get them to deed restrict. Is that still in there?
That's still very much part of the discussion. I think we're bouncing around the language of the ordinance itself. Yeah, that's been in discussion. Councilwoman Berger?
So interestingly enough, my mother built an accessory, like my brother now lives in the house, and my mother converted her two-car garage into a, like a accessory unit. It was a two-car garage, so I'm trying to figure out, is that 700 square feet or 1,000? Because she only has, it's a studio with like a tiny kitchen and a bathroom. So I'm just trying to gauge the scale since I actually have been in that.
It's like 650.
Okay. So that's a two, she has a two-car garage, and so that's 650. That's just under what the smaller end would be, right? Yeah?
That's correct.
I'm trusting Pete because he builds these things. So it's about, a two-car garage is about 650 square feet?
Or take, yes.
Right, so if you, so I don't know how you could get two bedrooms in 1,000 because I've been in there, it's not, there isn't a lot of room. So 1,000 would probably take up a lot of space on someone's lot, just for scale. No? I don't know how 1,000, it would be a three-car garage size.
Abel, if I can?
Yeah.
The way the math works out on the square footage is typically you would potentially be looking at a 20 by 40 first floor and potentially two, you know, you look at, and I'm just using simple math, 20 by 40 is 800 square feet. And then you would have a second bedroom tucked in the eve of a pitched roof, and that would be your second unit in the 200 square foot range. And that would get you to 1,000 square feet. Again, those numbers fluctuate a little bit. They may be 24 by 36, and then you get 250 to 260 upstairs, but you can do it on that smaller footprint. In most instances, it does require you to utilize that second loft area as the second bedroom.
And then just to follow up based on some of the things. So what's, so if it is deed restricted, what's, what are the guardrails to prevent someone from not making it like affordable for a person? Like, so like, I'm always like, how is someone going to abuse it? Because we look at, I know the development you're talking about near in Mattoonik, East Mattoonik, where they're deed restricted, it's someone's mother-in-law, or it's so-and-so, or, so how do we prevent that? Because I would be thinking that people would just use the URI students, just who are going to pay top dollar to live in that because they have that income. So we're creating income, but we're not solving the affordable housing issue.
That's a great question. It's something that we've been throwing around a lot in the Affordable Housing Collaborative discussions about this. So I'll let other people, you know, chime in as they have additional. I'll let other people, you know, chime in as, as they have additional points, but you know, the enforcement is a big question, right? How do you make sure? And the other question that we've put out there is, is, you know, how do we make sure that, that these are, you know, year-round units if we want that as well? Certainly, on the affordable side, they need to be, you know, deeded and, and be round. So we've had some discussions with the town on how that would, could be enforced. I don't know, Rob, if you want to speak to any-
Deb, you're, you're exactly right. This is another weakness in the state's program. The way that it is done is that there is a, an agency identified as the enforcement agency, and they have to check annually for thirty years. And it doesn't get done particularly well, and people do all sorts of things to evade the letter of the law. There's no doubt that college students paying top dollars still qualify. Because they're college students, they don't have income.
So, actually, actually, Rob, I believe-
Not top dollar, you're right.
I, I believe undergrads do not qualify for LMI housing.
But graduate students do.
Graduate students and professors would qualify.
But you're, you're right. I mean, you know, with the retired couple, all, but again, those folks are low income. I mean, to the extent that they meet the income criteria, they qualify. So.
Graduate students are good people, too.
We've also seen one other sort of weird variation on that, and that is when the occupant begins to exceed the income numbers, it's no longer occupied by a low-income person, but we don't, you don't kick them out. The, the rule yields to the tenant's new status for so long as that tenant or occupant owner perhaps is in the unit. So if you win the lottery, the unit doesn't have to be given up.
Jen?
Quick. I just wanted to suggest that if we're I, I think the Affordable Housing Collaborative has something pretty good on the table for you for the accessory dwelling unit pilot. And that's really what we've been talking about on the committee is, let's do a pilot, let's cap the amount, let's learn, right? We, we still have a lot of hypotheses and, and not all the answers yet. So even if we're gonna think about changing the ordinance to make the ADUs bigger or, or do some other adjustments, I would suggest maybe we simultaneously have that discussion and try to roll out a small pilot to just gauge community interest in what already exists in the books for the one-bedroom ADU and, and see what happens. Because I, I think you know, this has come up more than once, but we are really good at talking. It's time to roll some stuff out in a careful way that, you know, doesn't put the community at risk, but also lets us really understand what's happening and, and find out if this is an incentive that people really want. You know, we sense that it is. And if we have a really great, successful pilot, then I think we either could continue the pilot the way it is, or realize that we want to make adjustments to it to help it, you know, grow in a different way, or to, to add different people, like families to it. So I just wanted to throw that out there as we're going through the work. I'm having a little bit of, we keep workshopbing anxiety, so I just had to share it out loud.
I want to chime in and, and on Jen's comment and let everybody know that we, we've had entire evenings where all we did was try and figure out how people would take advantage of the program. And by the end of the night, your head's spinning. And, and that's where the idea of rolling out, you know, we might, we might decide to roll out twenty-five of these the first year, or the whatever. I'm encouraged to know that, as Jamie Gorman is saying, people are asking him about them, because, you know, part of our discussions, then we might find that not one single person is going to be interested. We're thinking that's not the case, but that's good to know that people are asking questions about them. And i- if anybody is interested in a really good resource, we've been talking about California, Maxiblespace.com is a really great place to get a whole ton of information, sign up for their newsletter. It's really, it's an organization that works on helping people build these in LA County. And it really gives you a good idea as far as wrapping your head around probably what we're talking about. They show everything from, you know, single units to, you know, a, a remodeled shed, you know, that was a poolhouse, and now it's a, you know, it's, it's a grandma unit. And, and a lot, you know, some of the stories are, you know, something we hadn't thought about when we started this process. Some of the stories are about aging population folks who are retired, who wanted to gain income to rent their main primary home. So they built the accessory dwelling unit to live in, so they could get more rental from the larger home and be able to afford to still live in, in LA County. And I think that, that could, that could work here as well. So just a couple of additional thoughts there.
One specific question I have is, when, when do we expect these ordinance to be before us for a public hearing?
I'm, I'm putting the draft together right now. I'm, I'm planning on having it ready for the next affordable housing meeting. And, you know, given our lengthy discussions to date, I'm, I'm hoping that it'll be in a, a good enough format to have a vote at the next meeting.
And I, I hate to bring this up now, but Amy Goins. My recollection, and I haven't been involved in this conversation for a while, but my recollection was that we had run this to ground and that there is no state authorizing legislation necessary to abate these units. We can abate and we can even exempt these units. The exemption's easy because all low-moder income units can be exempted, but the abatement of the non-low mod, my recollection was we had run that to ground, you recall?
This is Amy Goins. That's my recollection as well, but I'm gonna have to double-check my memory on that, because I think it was a little while ago.
We have had John Bouchard participating in our last couple of meetings, and that was his conclusion as well, that it was the abatement was fine, but for an exemption, you had to have a statutory authorization. So.
Very good. And Josh, your hand is up again? Yeah, just briefly to Deb Berger's point about, you know, how small these units are and who might want to live in units like that, just a quick anecdote. And I think is not just an anecdote for me, but, you know, is representative of something. You know, our family, my family, when we were living in New Orleans, lived in a five hundred and fifty square foot apartment when our second daughter was born. And we're very comfortable in it, because it was very well-designed for, for the living that we did. So if it's well-designed, I think it's actually attractive. And then on the cottage unit as well, some people might say, who wants to live that close to anybody, you know? And who wants to live in that small of a space? But I can assure you that my those same daughters, their favorite show is Tiny House Nation, and there's a, a real desire for small but smart spaces. Certainly among folks who are probably forty and younger. That's an attractive value proposition. So just to put that out there.
I appreciate that. And I didn't realize, sorry, Joe Murphy. I just didn't realize the second floor, because I kept, I was thinking spread and, because a two-car garage is it's pretty big, you know, and we plunk it down, then you think a three-car garage, it's like a hanger of an airplane. So I didn't, just wasn't thinking visually up. So I, hers is also ADA for whatever reasons, and so it probably has consumed a lot of extra space.
Yeah, and Joe Murphy?
Now, I just wanted to say, say that I support keeping it to seven hundred and fifty square feet. And I believe you should have separate tools for separate purposes. And seven hundred and fifty square feet is limited, but at the same time, it's small in size, which means it's less imposing to neighboring properties, which gives us flexibility on the regulations. It allows us to be a little more flexible with setbacks, height requirements, what areas that they are allowed in. There's many times when we, you may need a thousand square feet, a two-bedroom, but now we're really starting to talk about the two families and the regulations that's associated with those and where those are appropriate. So I'm, I'm a supporter of keeping it at seven hundred and fifty square feet, so you have separate tools for separate purposes.
All right, thank you. Any other opinions, one way or the other, on the seven fifty to one thousand square feet? Heard sort of both.
I guess my only other piece would be the if you're gonna keep the seven fifty, you should look at like enclosed exterior space or, or covered exterior space, like entryways and rear decks or, or something, you know, spaces where people can sit outside and be covered or coming into the home. That's considered currently right now part of the seven hundred and fifty square feet that we would not be able to allow.
Right. That does seem like it might be pertinent. I don't know. I guess we'll see when we get the ordinance before, Councilwoman Berger?
Just a process question. So the Affordable Housing Collaborative is advisory to the planning board. So does it come from the Affordable Housing Collaborative to the planning board, to the council? What's the, what's, how, how does that kind of work? And potentially, could there be a tweak at the planning board and then another tweak at the council? Or does it sort of just cycle through the, the boards and commissions to the council?
Abel, I'll let Amy answer that one. And I think some of that is process of, who wants to touch it at what phase?
We actually had this discussion at the last meeting and with Joe, who's our planning board liaison. And I think what we arrived at was that we will send it up to the planning board for discussion, sort of for a, a courtesy review, but I believe we can forward the, the recommendation directly to council.
I think the charge of the Affordable Housing Collaborative allows it to be advisory to both the planning board and the council directly.
I, I would, I would suggest the same, and I would also note that what we're talking about is tax policy, not changes in zoning, if you're not dealing with a seven hundred and fifty square foot question. If you're leaving it as is, it's merely a tax question.
I, I know we had this discussion, and as Brian alluded, and the way I saw it, I think Brian, too, is that the Affordable Housing looks at commission looks at ways of encouraging the affordable housing and look at those incentives. And the planning board's more associated with the rules and regulations and how to fit them into the community. So.
It sounds like we might have enough time to, you know, when it's before us in the public hearing, to by that time have some type of letter from the planning board, you know, recommending it.
Abel, if anybody's interested, I can provide links to different architects who, with a couple clicks of a button, you can see what seven hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred square feet is. You can literally search one of my most referred architects. You literally can go to her webpage and click in eight hundred to a thousand, and house plans well-done, well-thought-out. She's out of the Katrina event from the hurricane and worked hard on Katrina cottages and built her practice around that smaller house and those prefab-type designs. Again, the architecture is, is very well-done and transplantable to South Kingstown.
Yeah, that might be helpful. And just to answer one of Deb's questions, yes, we could think, or, you know, if the recommendation comes to us at seven fifty, we do have the authority at the council level to change that during, you know, our considerations with us.
So I just, I just didn't, I was just sort of thinking, it would be nice to have the planning board give us input and then you know, then take it to the council. And then novice question again, is that a public hearing or is it not that? Sorry.
This will be a public hearing, definitely, yeah. Joe, your hand is still up. Did you want to say something else or? Any more commentary on the ADU? And if not, we have gotten to nine forty-five at night. I want to congratulate you all for sticking with it this long. If we're done with the ADU discussion, I would just ask, you know, council members at this point, you know, this was an opportunity to gather a lot of information from some of the really important advisory boards that we have. Do we feel like now we're in a spot where we can you know, sort of elucidate on our goals and objectives around land use and you know, housing policy for the coming term?
I think this has been extraordinary, super informative. I'm grateful to have everybody giving their feedback and input. So thank you to everybody who is here tonight.
I'll express my thank you to everyone as well. I'm excited to get these ordinance, you know, at our tables to vote on at upcoming council meetings. I think this is, these are steps in the right direction. Specifically, the cottage, cottage zoning regulation, as well as the accessory dwelling regulations. Obviously, affordable housing and increasing the stock in town is a goal of all of us on the council. So I think these are all steps in the right direction. We appreciate the work of both of your groups, obviously very advisory to the council. And yeah, I'm excited to, you know, get this in front of us so we can vote on it for sure.
I just want to say thank you to everyone. I feel much smarter than I did at seven PM. Thank you.
I, I do, I, I also want to thank everyone. I appreciate it. There's like a nice diversity of skills and talents and, and perspectives. And I think when you, when you listen in a planning board meeting or you're listening at the boards, you don't really, you don't get to showcase your philosophies and, and things like that. So I appreciate that. Would love to follow up with you, Jen Kruger, about talking about housing policy and institutional racism on that. So I appreciate everyone, and I did learn a ton, and I appreciate it very much.
Yes. Just like to give a quick, just heads up to the council. So we've been very active at the Affordable Housing Collaborative, as you can see. And another thing that we've been talking about that was sort of alluded to in this meeting was the Affordable Housing Fund. So just a heads up that we've been working on some language around the Affordable Housing Fund, and that's something that is likely to come to in the not-too-distant future as well. Excellent. Forward to it. Yeah, great, great discussion tonight. I think probably the hard work now is left to Rob to boil down a lot of what was discussed and sort of encapsulate that on top of what we discussed on Monday night in terms of the goals and objectives. Good luck in making that all into a single thing we can turn into our goals and objectives.
Ideas to work with, though. Thank you.
Welcome. All right. Well, I think that that sort of wraps it up for tonight. These are continuing discussions. Look forward to hearing more from, you know, planning board, Affordable Housing Collaborative. At some point, I sure we'll meet with you both separately. But it is always about finding the right time for those things. So until then, keep up the good work. And have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.